...in progress.
Here we go, thank you. All right, everybody, thank you for being here, virtually or in person. This is the Wednesday, October 6th, meeting of Norbert Borough Council. It is 7:35 PM. The meeting has been called to order. Ms. Bryant, will you call the roll?
Sure, absolutely. Council President Erin Luterick.
Here.
Council Vice President Bob Weisberg.
I'm here.
Council Member Fred Bush.
Here.
Council Member Barbara Fortner.
Here.
Council Member Rob McGrady.
Here.
Council Member Michelle Ananopoulos.
Here.
Council Member Cindy Records.
Here.
Mayor Andrew Lloyd.
Here.
Thank you, I have no comments. Ms. Mayor?
Uh, just very brief tonight, um, as we are getting into October, please be cognizant that it's getting dark earlier. I would ask folks to, uh, to be especially vigilant as you're driving through the borough, because you'll, you'll find people walking through the borough at times when you may not have been as visible, it may not have been as visible, uh, in the earlier months. So, uh, please be vigilant, uh, we have some holidays, Halloween and, uh, the witches events coming up, so, uh, so we have good stuff to look forward to, and, uh, just, uh, that's it.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move to public comment. Anyone here as a member of the public, um, not already on the agenda to make a presentation, who would like to comment on any subject? Seeing none, anyone remotely who would like to make a comment? You can unmute. Hearing none, I will close the public comment and we will move to 6A.
Actually, no, I'm sorry, I called none. As Council President, we, the borough did, uh, put in your packet, did receive one, uh, public comment in advance of the meeting, uh, via a letter.
Okay.
So I'll share this with, uh, councilman public very briefly.
Thank you.
Uh, we received a letter from Borough Resident Lisa Saltzman, who lives at 205 Hill Terrace, and I'll just, it's only three paragraphs, I'll read the letter very quickly.
Sure.
Dear Borough Committee Members, as a longtime resident of Norbert, I built my house in the spring of 2004, and a tennis player, it is known, mounting sadness is frustration that I've watched the fourth hall enter ever greater disrepair with every passing year. Some years ago, I attended a borough meeting to inquire about resurfacing and was told that they were underutilized. I would counter that they are underutilized because they have been verging on unplayable for years, and now they are truly so riven with wide cracks that no one, say, deliberately gentlemen, giving lessons to small children, could have anything approaching a decent or safe game. For years now, I've had to drive over to Ardmore, Winwood to use their courts, often full, while witnessing a resurfacing of a basketball court just next to the tennis courts. In a borough that prides itself on walkability, I find it sad that I and some member of my fellow tennis-playing neighbors don't have the satisfaction of walking down the hill to use the Borough Park. As a resident, a tennis player, and a taxpayer, I ask simply that the borough redress the ongoing neglect of our courts and prioritize the resurfaces.
Thank you very much. All right, I will close public comment, we'll go to 6A, 6:50 Montgomery Avenue. Mr. Rosenzweig, feel free to take the floor.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody, it's nice to see everybody in person again, and for those on screen, Herb Schultz, PCS Architect, is with me this evening. Our reason for being here tonight is a plan modification, uh, to what was already our approved plan, ironically, I was saying to Fred, uh, that was back in, uh, November of 2019 already at this point. Be that as it may, we move forward to today. We had met with the Norbert Planning Commission back in September, went in front of them two nights ago formally, uh, we're fortunate to receive their recommendation to move forward, and what we'll do is just walk you through what its plans were. From a high level, there are no changes to the technical plans from a civil perspective. Um, the one change actually that is factored in is that we do actually pick up additional landscaping on this plan from what we previously had. The largest change here is that the elevated sidewalk terrace that went all the way around the building is now dropped to street level on Meeting House, uh, about fifty-five, sixty percent of the way on Meeting House. That allows us to open up what would be aggregate walking, uh, access from the sidewalk into what you see here is a lowered, uh, aggregate additional sidewalk. Hi.
Nice, good, kind of.
Please.
Okay, so wait, this is good news, because I was trying to draw, so originally, if you were walking down Montgomery to, I'm sorry, walking down Meeting House to Montgomery, you would have had a ten-foot retaining wall on your right?
So, seven, yes.
Seven, okay. It's seven foot, and you're saying that's, now that I'm reading this, that's now at grade level to the sidewalk?
Yes, almost all of it, yes. We still have, because of the grade change, because if you recall, we are at street level here at two-hundred-and-ninety-six or seven feet, and the other side is three-hundred-and-seven.
Okay, so the drawing, the visual then with the giant black wall, was that the old version?
Yeah, so the previous version that you've probably all seen had a set of steps coming up on the backside here, up to, uh, up to a retaining wall that was generally at the same elevation as the bottom of these windows all the way along. We had an ADA accessible lift on the backside, and then a patio that was public access but was probably less, uh, pedestrian-friendly than what we're proposing there.
Correct, okay, I'm sorry, so when I saw this, I was reading the report about the pedestrian, and then I saw that visual right there, and I was trying to figure out where that wall was, but that's the old one.
I had that plan, I'm sorry.
There is, there's not.
Do you have the one with the red on it?
Any other questions? Anything else to add?
Um, other than that, um, like I said, no, we got rid of the staircase, the vertical transportation would now be inside, we pick up here where the staircase is additional landscaping, and we actually are able to add, we, this was the original landscaping conceptual plan from a top-down view, you can see there was three trees across the front with a small fourth one, we now have been able to pick up two additional trees along the front of the property and add additional landscaping, and, uh, we are asking for your approval later this month to just approve this amended to the plan.
Okay, thank you. Rob?
Uh, the electric car stations, do you have, uh, I think it was four spots, is that what you're planning?
So, that was brought up somehow in these plans, it went from four to two, um, it was brought up by the commission, or the planning commission, and then something we had to go back and address, um, and, there's no specific reason to just...
So you're willing to go back to the original?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else? Thank you.
Just all the other aspects of the plan are the same, just other than the terms?
Yeah, from a vertical, you know, from a plan standpoint, with the exception of some additional trees and the removal of these steps, the impervious actually, I think, has gone down a little bit. Everything else is the same.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your time, see you in a few weeks, thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, 6B, 146 Marion.
Good evening, Fred Fromhold, attorney, I represent the applicant in this matter, and we have been before the planning commission, we have the recommendation of the planning commission that had just come out, and I trust that that was distributed, uh, to you, and I, I think that in a nutshell, the planning commission has indicated that consistent with the engineer reviews and reviews of the county planning commission and review of the borough zoning officer, that the plan spoke to plan. The planning commission has, uh, raised certain preferences, it believes that it would like to see smaller homes, homes that are shaped a little bit differently, um, and has suggested to you that, uh, it would like to see the applicant develop this perhaps under, uh, an amended ordinance that would, uh, enable, uh, the preservation of the existing home to be part of a development of this tract. Um, I think the planning commission has, uh, recognized in its write-up that the applicant has been cooperative, and in fact, a few months ago, we had submitted certain language that we felt would enable, uh, consideration of the preservation of the home, and at the time, the planning commission got back to us and said that they would prefer to more carefully study, uh, the ordinance, uh, and perhaps have a, uh, more holistic or global approach, you know, to the preservation of, of existing homes, uh, instead of latching one to the suggestion that we had made. And I think the planning commission is in the process of doing that, and they expect to be coming forward with, uh, something soon on that. And as we explained to the planning commission, we don't know whether what they come up with ultimately would be approved by you, uh, the governing body, uh, and we also don't know what, uh, it might look like and what it might allow by way of development of this site, and whether it would allow development that would be of comparable value, necessarily be equivalent value, but of substantial value that it would warrant, uh, moving from the plan that we have before you tonight to that plan, but we remain open to that, so, uh, we just need to wait and see. In the meantime, uh, what we'd like to do tonight is have, uh, our engineer and architect explain to you this plan, and, uh, we believe that the, uh, the houses, the twins that have been designed here are, uh, very nice and will be appropriate, uh, for the street, will contribute, uh, to, uh, the street, reflect Norbert architecture, um, even if it doesn't, uh, necessarily meet what the ideal of the planning commission would be for, uh, the design of these units, but, uh, we'd like to show you the plan, uh, as I said, it has been reviewed by the professionals in terms of the quote, quote compliant in terms of all of the objective requirements of the code. And I, and I do point out to you that when it comes to the form-based zoning, uh, it is very difficult to, uh, achieve all of the objective requirements in the development of a house and the design of a house on a lot. In, in the old days, under the more traditional zoning, if you had the setbacks and then the height and the building coverages and impervious coverages, uh, you could build what you want. Now, there are certain mathematical formulas that, uh, you know, address, uh, frontage, you've got to consider other properties, you've got, uh, facade area analysis that need to be made, uh, it's very complicated, uh, so, uh, that's a challenge of any applicant and the professionals to meet all of those. We've done that here, we've met all of the code requirements. So with that, I'd like Chris Young to, uh, just walk you through the plan, and, uh, Jack Burns then to talk about the, uh, what we believe are very nice twins that have been designed.
Thank you. Mr. Young?
Good evening, uh, thank you, I'm the civil engineer for this project, so just quickly with where we are, uh, this is a subdivision and land development, uh, in Norbert, there's three stages, there's a tentative sketch, play, phase, preliminary, and final, and so we're tentative sketch here, where we really just focus on layout of buildings, uh, driveway, and kind of bulk compliance with the code. And so what we have here is, um, along the top of the page is Marion Avenue, and along the bottom is Rockland Avenue, and this lot goes from street to street. And so the way we have this broken up is we have property line down the center, uh, and then again, in between each half to kind of have four quadrants, and so we have a twin building that faces Marion and a twin building that faces Rockland Avenue. For Marion Avenue, there are parking credits, uh, one for every twenty-four point five-two, I think it is, linear feet or something close to that, uh, and so we do have two parking credits for each unit, and so we do not have any separate parages or driveways. For the Rockland Avenue properties, there is no parking credit, and so we have a, uh, a driveway with a surface parking spot in the third lot layer for, for those units. Each unit has its own porch, uh, we show a patio in the rear, walkways to the sidewalks on each street, uh, as Fred said, we did start this process and project, we submitted originally February first, uh, and then we've met with the planning commission several times, made changes to try, try to address, uh, some of the major bulk zoning concerns, and I believe we've done that. Uh, so there's not really a whole lot more with this plan other than the kind of, you know, bulk footprints, porches, uh, and that stuff, we do show some potential street trees just to see what it would look like, so that we can meet that code, we show some potential areas for underground stormwater management systems, uh, and so this is the plan, this is, you know, the, the one-page, uh, layout, we have an existing additions slash demo plan, uh, when we come back with preliminary plans is when it will be fully designed. So I'm happy to answer any questions about the site, or I can turn over to the architect if any come up.
Any questions from Mr. Young? And we can hear everything and, you know, have a further conversation if needed.
Okay, great, uh, good evening, everyone, my name's Jack Burns, um, I have a practice in Ardmore, and, uh, been working with Joe and Summer on this project since late 2020. So over the course of the project, we've come up with several different ideas, um, a lot of it was going back and forth with Chris Young's plans and the fine tuning of the site plan, and what we arrived at was a series of buildings that take into account the current Norbert zoning plan, so we have, in the first lot layer, we have nothing there. The second layer here, sorry, at the first, at the end of the first lot layer, where the first primary facade is, we have a diagram down this corner of the sheet that gives the areas that's allowed, and this is in compliance with the Norbert zoning code. And then six feet back from that, we start the primary portion of the building, that is a two-story facade here with a roof and then some glomers up into the third floor area. Uh, the, the house gradually shrinks in size from floor to floor depending on which floor you're on, and as, by the time we get to the third floor, it's, yeah, I would call it attic, but it's not as large as the fourth floor. Uh, the goal of the, uh, kind of the design overall was to do something fairly traditional, something that would fit in with the overall looking field of Norbert homes, and to that end, we've looked at, you know, traditional materials, siding, woods, shingles, pretty windows, that type of thing. These are kind of, I would call them concept drawings, like good concept drawings are concept drawings, we're still working through some of the finer points of the actual details of the, of the building. We have done a lot of work in plan, but kind of a little bit of a hen ourselves in our typical process here with worded off delineations than we typically have at this point, but there was a number of questions, so we decided to throw them in.
Okay, thank you. Any questions specifically for the architect?
Is there any scenario where the beautiful old house and gorgeous old trees are maintained and the property owner could still, um, leverage their rights to subdivide the property? Is there any?
I don't know that I'm the correct response to that question.
And then let me say, Summer Knight, the owner is here, and she can address you as well on that, but I, I think, uh, where we are on that is, we've been waiting to have some feedback from the efforts that, uh, we were informed would be made by the planning commission, uh, that, uh, that they would, uh, try to come up with an ordinance that they could present to you, and you could discuss and see whether it made sense for Norbert, and under that ordinance, uh, I believe they are looking to, uh, enable preservation of the existing home and a reasonable development of the property. But as I said, uh, they haven't, uh, done that yet, although I think they're close. Uh, you haven't seen it, uh, you don't know what's in it, and we don't know, uh, what that will, uh, provide in terms of, uh, reasonable, uh, comparable, uh, development and value for this property. And as I said, while we're not looking to, uh, necessarily have, uh, a dollar for dollar, uh, we would need overall, I think, and, uh, Summer would, to, uh, say it would make sense to move to, uh, and, uh, we have said from the outset that we're open to that, and we remain open to that, but I can't, uh, say at this moment, uh, whether the results of the effort will, uh, be sufficient to, uh, enable us to, to move in that direction, but we're open to it.
So, at this point, I'd like to ask Mr. Bresi, if he has any comments to share, either, you know, for council or the public.
Uh, sure, thank you, uh, Mr. President, and, um, I appreciate the chance to, to respond. Um, I also want to thank Mr. Fromhold, I think his characterization of, uh, of what is, uh, going on is, is, is pretty accurate. We have been working on some alternative approaches, uh, to how infill development could occur on larger lots with historic houses. Uh, as you know, our focus up until July was, was working on getting the historic district in place, and we've been working pretty vigorously since then on this, and we expect to have, um, some proposals that we can send to you very, very shortly. With, the, the commission actually, uh, signed off on a concept memo, uh, Monday night as well, and that would involve a couple of things, it would involve, um, the proposal of new housing types that could occur on smaller lots than we allow right now, so which would allow, um, properties such as this to do different kinds of subdivision that would make it easier to infill. Um, we are looking at, uh, tweaking the code to allow for more than one, uh, primary structure or house on a lot, that sounds like a technical issue, but, uh, right now we only allow one primary structure on a lot, and by allowing more than one on a lot, we can provide a lot more flexibility in the site planning, which could more efficiently allow for infill development as well. Uh, we also will have with you concepts for how, um, accessory dwelling units could be accommodated in Norbert, so there are a lot of ideas about how, um, um, this could be accommodated, and Mr. Fromhold's right, under, knowing that we were working on the historic district, uh, ordinance, we felt the only responsible course of action was, was then to look at how, uh, properties in, in the historic district that have large lots, which are potentially developable, but where tear downs would be very difficult, how new infill could be accommodated on those lots, and recognizing that we're asking property owners now to maintain their houses, uh, how can we ensure they do have opportunity? And so that is the problem we set ourselves, and we will, we'll have something for you very, very shortly on that. However, in addition to your question, Council Member Records, um, the, um, applicant did have, uh, a suggestion for zoning revision, which I, I think we would be happy to consider at this point now, that we've gone through this work already, and though, you know, I haven't worked it out the way that Mr. Young would, who, who studies these things very carefully, I actually think there's probably a simple solution, uh, that would simply involve potentially a variance and/or a subdivision waiver that could allow for a house to be infilled and, um, uh, the preservation of the house. So I think there are a couple of routes that could be followed. When we met with the, um, applicant on Monday, we were, we were extremely encouraged that, that Mr. Fromhold and the whole team said that they were willing to continue this conversation, uh, to continue to look at options, uh, other options for approaching this site. Um, we suggested at the meeting there were a couple of starting points for that, like I've said, the language the applicant's proposed for zoning changes, the concepts we're looking at for zoning changes, and potentially even the possibility that variance or, um, indoor subdivision modifications could provide some strategy going forward to. I think there are a lot of options to look at, and we were heartened by the presentation, and we are eager, we're eager to do that, and, uh, we, we would hope that you would, uh, use your, um, role in this to really encourage us along and help us, and help us get to the point where we can have a fruitful, a fruitful conversation, and potentially even have some ideas to share with you before you have to vote on this in two weeks. We, we would be, we would be eager to move with that, that, that amount of speed, so, um, thank you, that's, that's really what, what I have to say at this point.
Okay, thank you. Other questions from council members?
Yeah.
Mr. Bush?
I mean, given that, uh, planning commission is imminently planning to, to provide us with, um, recommendations that, you know, could bear on this property, uh, would you be willing to, uh, grant an extension of a month or two on this application so that, um, you could have a look at the, uh, proposed changes and see how they fit in with your plans? I'm not saying pull it, I'm saying...
And that, that's a fair question, and, uh, here's where we are. The process is long, you know, in Norbert, you've got to go through tentative sketch plan approval, which is where we are now. If you get that, you need to go through the entire process all over again to get preliminary plan approval. And then in Norbert, unlike most communities, you've got to go through, uh, the process again, maybe a little simpler for final plan, but, so you're, uh, doing it three times, each of these takes a significant amount of time, a few months, if it's going fast, and it can take longer if it's not. We have actually slow-walked this plan through, uh, hoping that we would be getting something in the meantime. We're not there yet, and, uh, we're months away from being there, and we don't know what that's going to look like, you know, when you get there, so if there's an ordinance amendment, you at some point need to consider a draft ordinance, and then if you like the draft, you've got to work it, you've got to advertise it, have a public hearing on it, maybe further amend it, you're probably at best a few months away from, uh, a draft ordinance, assuming you take it up right about, uh, being enacted, that we could go. So, we had basically, the planning commission, I don't think had asked that question directly, but I think they were, uh, probably thinking along the same lines, and, so we're saying, so that we can do this fairly and so that we don't lose time, if in fact, what is, uh, the, uh, amendment that you would come up with, if that doesn't, uh, provide for a reasonable alternative development, we would like this to be moving through. Uh, the faster that you could come up with something, if it does provide a solution, then we could switch to it, but we, we've already slowed this plan down, and we don't want to slow it down further, especially not knowing whether there will be a solution. I just want to comment on one point that Mr. Bresi had made, and, uh, the planning commission had made it Monday night, and that is, uh, whether a variance is a solution. I don't look at a variance as a good solution here, I, I look at an ordinance amendment as a good solution. To get a variance, uh, you need to show an unnecessary hardship, when you're developing a property and you're, uh, you need a variance by virtue of your development plan, uh, that's almost DOA, uh, before the zoning board, so, I would not want to slow down this application with a variance that would take a few months, uh, or even a new application with a variance that would take a few months that I, I don't think is likely to be legally on firm grounds. Uh, I don't think it's likely to be granted, number one, and then if it were to be granted, I think it would be on, uh, shaking grounds until the appeal period expired, so, a variance I don't look at as being a good solution. I see an ordinance amendment, uh, that would allow for, uh, a reasonable alternative development for this property, uh, to be the good solution if indeed, uh, it would provide for that reasonable alternative development. But in the meantime, we really think it's fair to this applicant, especially since we haven't, we haven't moved this, uh, we've, we have moved it slow, but it's, it's time that we ask you to act on this plan, and, uh, keep the faith with us on that as we consider what you come up with.
Thank you. Did you have any questions?
Um, yeah, if you don't mind, um, I, um, you want me to stand up or can I?
Probably you stand up again. You can stand, just so that the people who are here with us virtually have a better chance to hear you.
Um, so first of all, um, my name is Summer Knight, and I am a member of our community, I'm not a builder, so, I'm not the project that came before you, um, and, uh, I walk these streets, um, I know... I know our street very well because I've lived down there for a decade. I've put my kids through school in our local schools, and I've been a very active member of our community. And I've weathered probably the worst hardship a family will weather with the love and support of this community. So I very much respect this community. And I will have to say that if it weren't for this amazing team, we would not be this far, to underscore that I'm not a builder. Next point is that we have been working on this and communicating with the Planning Commission since 11 months. And as Fred just walked through, we're not even at the first third of the process to get through this. And to think about if we extended it, does that mean it would be taking three years? But the bigger issue around this is when I first came with the first ideas, before we ever did a submission, those ideas were with the original house being kept intact. And we were told that there was absolutely no way to build pretty much anything on that property with that house staying there. And so, and so we had to think outside the box. And then after several iterations, this was, with a lot of limitations, was what we came up with, unfortunately, without the house. Before that, before we were told we could not save the house to do a project, I had thought about, and done some research around, well, can I just shift my house? Can I literally keep it on the property, move it forward, move it over towards the neighbors, and then kind of put additional houses in? That could sound like an interesting, expensive proposition, but it would keep the house and our neighbors want to see it. At this point, because we have gone so long in this process, so 11 months, where it should have taken three months, we have burned time and unfortunate resources, which again goes back to the fact that I'm not a builder, I'm a community member, I can only afford a house like this in this community, you about know what my income is. And so I'm getting to the point where these other options are starting to go away. And so I do express that I'm interested in being flexible and working with the community, but I can't necessarily live up to everyone's big visions at this point because we burned time and resources. So happy to do it. I do agree with Fred, at least give us something to hold on, because I had trust in the conversations that we had with community members and the Planning Commission. I think we've rebuilt trust recently, but the way I understood it is we were going to work together, and then just things didn't move forward. And I recognize, they are volunteers, they're working super hard, summer also happened, they also had other agendas, it's just one lot. So compassion for everybody, but just time is moving on, and so are resources. So that's what I'd share. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? Does it come up in two weeks?
I think that's for Todd. Yeah, I just wanted to, I wasn't sure if I, Todd, if you're still on the call, just for clarification, is that, if I understand, I'm not sure, I want to make sure I understood you correctly. Efforts to look for potential, even potential ordinance amendments are ongoing and active and such that it's possible at least something conceptually could be coming to us as early as two weeks at our next meeting? Is that, that's what I thought I heard, but I don't want to, is that a possibility?
That is correct, and I believe the borough manager has scheduled part of your November work session to discuss, to discuss what we're going to submit to you.
Okay, great, because I hope that we are going to just, you know, I think the time is now to really take a look at the language that Mr. Fromhold and Mr. Young put together some months ago, and, you know, pick it back up again and see if there's any way to work with that, and, you know, see if we can move this towards a better place for everybody. So I'm hopeful, and we urge you to, you know, bring us, bring us your thoughts and ideas, and let's see what we can do.
If I may, my intention is in the next couple of days to send you that. Like I said, the Planning Commission signed off on that set of concepts Monday. And when we transmit that to you, as we normally do, we will post it for public review, and we will send it to this team and ask then to start the discussions. I would like to clarify, or at least respond to something Ms. Knight said. The initial meetings were not with the Planning Commission 11 months ago, they were with the building official. And so anything that occurred there, I can't really represent as part of this conversation. Secondly, the applicant, though they have been working on this, they did not actually, we have reviewed this several times, and each time we reviewed it, it was not code compliant. So they've been submitting plans, but they've not been code compliant. It wasn't until July that they, after July, after our July meeting, they submitted a code compliant plan. So while I regret this has taken so long, I really don't want council to have the impression that the Planning Commission has been not attentive to this. Our view is that the applicant has not been able to submit an approvable, or at least a code compliant, application until just now.
Thank you, Mr. Bressi.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on in our agenda, and thank you all for coming and for your time. Thank you for attending this project. We'll go to 7A, and I'll call on the chief, start his five-year policing plan.
That's not just sidebars.
Thank you, Samantha. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for their time tonight for this presentation. It's very important to the community, very important to the department, and I'm sure everybody here knows me. First and foremost, before I continue, I'd like to thank Samantha and the mayor, who met with me repeatedly, multiple times about this during the past few months as a team. And this really is a collaborative effort, even though I'm making the presentation, this is a collaborative effort between the three of us. And I can't thank them enough for their input and their advice that they had. And just to let you in on a little secret, I don't know whether it's me or the mayor, but we're always the one, oh, I forgot one last thing, I always forgot one last thing, so we call each other and torture each other. But however, this presentation is a culmination of multiple meetings between the three of us. And really, I'd like to thank the officers, because they have a lot of input into a lot of this stuff as well, because you have to talk to the practitioners in the field, you have to find out what's going on. Before I begin, I'd also like to thank council for their support for the past three and a half years. It has been obsolete, absolutely tremendous. The reason that we're at where we're at right now is because of the investment in the police department. So Samantha, I can begin?
So before you, is there a way to just keep clear of the...
Sure, sure.
...the moment to ease the... Oh, yeah. So, thank you. Go ahead. Okay.
I'll take it over here.
Okay, thank you. And now the crowd is clear, Jim, if you don't mind, I'm just...
Working on finding a new television.
So currently, as you know, we have one chief of police that is appointed at will, not represented by any collective bargaining agency. We have one police sergeant who is FOP represented by Lodge 28, and that goes for the four officers as well. So they're represented by the FOP. We have one parking controller at will, full-time, and then we have school crossing guards, sometimes the numbers vary, and we're at will, and they're part-time. The next thing I'd like to talk about is the police fleet. Our newest police vehicle will soon be eight years old. That's our 2014 Dodge sedan, that's our Dodge Charger. We'd like to replace that with a Ford or a Chevy, but that is number four. I labeled that at number four. The oldest vehicle that we have is soon to be 12 years old, and that is our 2010 Ford sedan, and we have that at number three for replacement. However, it's not in bad shape overall. But moving down, the vehicle that has the most use is our SUV, that's at 85,000 miles. So that has most of the wear and tear on it. That car, to be quite frank, is falling apart. That is $36.99, and that's the SUV that you see going throughout the borough. The oldest car that we have is our parking enforcement car, that's soon to be 18 years old, it's a 2004 Chevy Impala. I'd like to replace that with an electric car. So right there, that's our fleet. The unmarked car, believe it or not, that's in its best shape, and it has low mileage, it's well-maintained like all the cars, but overall, the mileage is very low and the idle time is very low in that vehicle. So it's in good shape. So I would have to say, if there's any car that's going to be taken off that list, that would be removed right away. We don't even have to really worry about that for right now. But the first car that we would have to replace would be the parking enforcement car. We've talked about this in the capital improvement plan. This is obviously a viable option for us, considering some of the new infrastructure that we have in the borough. Mayor, I'm sorry if I'm standing away. And the next car that we would have to replace probably is the SUV, just based on the condition of the vehicle, the fact that it has 85,000 miles on it, it's soon going to turn to 100,000 miles very shortly, within the next year. It gets the most beat-up use as we have in the borough. So right there, that's kind of what we have, that's our fleet, it's a total of five vehicles, and that's where we're at. So this is just basically a snapshot of the police station. This is a real 30,000-foot view, I didn't want to bore people with this. Everybody knows the condition in the police station. Each one of you have been inside the police station. So Samantha and I, we just kind of kept this level. The office furniture is probably from the late 80s, early 90s. You could probably actually educate me on that, am I correct on that?
It's probably about right.
So there are four desktop computers, the age is unknown, but I can tell you that they're old. We need an interview room as we're doing more and more investigations. We now own our investigations. We do all the investigations for lower-level felonies and misdemeanors and other offenses. If there's a crime in progress, or there's a major felony, a serious crime scene, we rely on our MOU with the Lower Meridian Police Department to help us and provide assistance. We have liaisons now with the Monco detectives, as well as the Monco District Attorney's Office. So we would definitely need an interview room. The idea basically is to use our locker room as the interview room and replace the locker room to another part of the building at some point in time, if we can find such an opportunity to do that. I don't know. But that's just kind of the overview of the police station. Again, each one of you have been inside that police station multiple times. This is, you know, if anybody has any questions or concerns about some of the other stuff in there, you can certainly ask me if you want.
Questions at this time?
That's just kind of a, you know, a big deal.
So what do you do with interviews right now?
That's actually a great question. We actually do them right through the desk. They also sit at their desk, and they do an interview with the complainant. But as we bring people in, we would like to have them in our interview room in private, which is what most police stations have, in addition to that set of policies and procedures as we bring in complainants and witnesses to crimes, and set up interviews. In addition to that, we also would have to set up a policy for our firearms, how do you secure them when you have people coming in and you're locked in a room with them? Also, we would have to get lockers, so, you know, right near that, gun lockers right near that interview room. We don't want an officer locked inside an interview room with someone and their arm, because that could be an officer safety issue. So we would have to come up with a policy for that. We don't have that issue right now, obviously, but at some point in time, that's something that we would have to, you know, unpack and we would have to think about. So, but that's where we do the interviews. If it's a complaint against police, that complaint against police is usually done up here. I would usually take the complainant and interview them away from the police station, away from the officer involved, make sure that that interview is conducted entirely in private, so the complainant, the person that wants to file that complaint, feels no pressure, that they feel open to talk, whether it's here, or whether they're in the all-purpose room, or in any other utility rooms on the side. So most times, I try to do it here, I try to make them comfortable, and I try to promote them to talk and get as much information as I can. But the one thing that we don't do is we don't interview complaints against police inside the police station. The good news is I now have a laptop, and I do a formal interview with all complaints against police. So when they come in, I sit down there and go through a whole Q and A that is numbered, just in case it progresses further and we have to reference it. So it's all there, the person who signs the complaint is asked to sign it, date it, and time it, and then they're asked to initial each page of that complaint. And then we go from there. So, but as of right now, an interview room would be very helpful, probably not in that regard, but in terms of the other investigations that we do. So our locker room, obviously, would have to be relocated somewhere else, we would have to have further conversation. But that's just a bigger view of the station. We could get into detail, we could get into minutia, but that's really not the gist of this conversation. Everybody can illustrate their own picture. Samantha, can you go in next? So it may be a little hard for me to read this with the bar, but I wanted to give everybody an assessment. The one thing that you hear, you know, recently about is mental health. How do police deal with mental health-related issues? Well, it's always good to know what your police department does. So we partner with Montgomery County Emergency Services, right? We partner with them, we have a great relationship with them. So Montgomery County Emergency Services is a crisis response center dedicated to giving persons who are experiencing psychiatric emergencies quality care at a safe, secure location while giving police officers the resources they need to handle those complaints. So all MPD officers are certified as crisis intervention specialists. It's trained and enhances their capabilities when interacting with persons with mental illnesses who are dealing with psychiatric emergencies. So every officer is trained in that area. See how trained officers work closely with the MOB units from that organization, which respond to psychiatric emergency as upon our request. So they come out there and they work closely with us. In addition to that, we have one officer who's certified in critical incident stress management or crisis stress management, depending on how you want to say that. So CISM, we have one officer who's CISM-trained. So this person responds to tragic incidents and to provide professional intervention and emotional support to first responders who were involved in such incidents. So this officer was also an employee at Building 50, which was a mental health facility, prior to her joining the job here in Norbert. This officer, unfortunately, this past summer, was called in the service for CISM-trained needs two times for the death of two firefighters, and she had to respond out there. And it was certainly a sad situation, because firefighters, unfortunately, had to watch two of their fellow firefighters die, you know, in the line of duty. So it was a very sad situation, but we're very proud that we have that officer to offer for professional and emotional support.
That is Officer Kelly Lynn.
It is, it is. It's Officer Kelly Lynn. She is certified in CISM, and it is great training, it is coveted training. I was involved with the CISM program in the Philadelphia Police Department for about a year as a commanding officer, and I can tell you that there are very few departments in, of this size, in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania that have a CISM-trained officer on location in your department. So we're very fortunate. So when we determine the need to hire more officers, more personnel, you're looking at officer safety, you're looking at workload, increased population, and resident-to-officer ratio, all right? So those are four components. They're not, it's not limited to just those four, but those are four main components. Now, when we talk about officer safety, I think the thing that we need to take into consideration, and everybody knows this, but it's worth discussing, all right, is that we have one officer on patrol in this borough for 4,345 residents and businesses. That one officer has to respond to many two-person assignments, and they have to be backed up by 22 or 24 car by Lower Meridian. It could be an alarm, it could be a fight on the highway, it could be a disturbance, it could be a medical emergency that requires a two-person response before Norbert ambulance arrives. It could be a Lyft assist, and it could also be a traffic accident, which is reportable, that involves an injury or towing, and involves traffic control while another officer is handling the accident itself. So there are many, many reasons why an officer has to be joined by 22 or 24 car to handle a job. And right now, that officer is going out there, we have an officer on patrol right now, by himself, that's what we have every day. There's one squad, which is one platoon, that has two officers, that's Officer Kelly Lynn and Officer Dane Dutton, they work together. So right now, we have Officer Kelly Lynn and Officer Dane Dutton in one platoon, in two platoon, it's Officer Sean McKay in three platoon, it's Sergeant Michael Vernatio in four platoon, it's Officer Matt Dolphy. So that's what we have right now. So in terms of officer safety, that's always an issue, and I'll give you an example. Within the past two years, Officer Belpe had used force, and we now have a use-of-force form report that we do for every use-of-force incident. So within the past two years, that officer had used force. And one of the reasons I believe that the officer had used force on the second time, involving disturbance out on the highway, outside the Grand American Pub, in the early morning hours around 2:00 a.m., I believe it was on maybe March 17... morning hours around two AM, I believe it was on maybe March twenty-third, I'm not sure, I think it was twenty-twenty, where that officer was waiting for response from twenty-two or twenty-four car, or for that matter, any car from Lower Merion. And he was dealing with two unruly people that were actually getting very confrontational with the officer. There was another person filming him. He handled the situation perfectly, and he was waiting and waiting and waiting, would seem to be an attorney. Even if you look at the film video that was caught by a witness, was waiting for an attorney for those two cars to respond. And as he's waiting, those people are getting more and more confrontational. I believe, obviously, as we all do, that there's strength in numbers. So, if there was another officer on patrol in Norbert Borough, that's certainly a deterrent for bad behavior. But because they saw that officer by himself, there was about two or three people that were involved in the incident, they felt emboldened. They felt that they could actually take advantage of that officer's solo status. So they got more and more confrontational, more and more lippy, and in addition to that, it ended up with the officer having to use force. He had to deploy his taser. And we have a use-of-force report done on that and it was reviewed by the Lower Merion Police Department and it was in compliance with training. So, with that in mind, that's one of the things that I worry about, is that job just kind of stays out in my head and that's why I wanted to mention it. So, when it comes to workload, and we'll get into it, I have some more slides to present about that, we could discuss that. And then there's increasing population. We know what the situation is and the resident-to-officer ratio. So the International Association of Chiefs of Police, for years, they would come up with a resident-to-officer ratio model. So that would change for each community. It was very hard to nail down that exact ratio because every community is unique. Every community has its differences. I'll give you an example. The resident-to-officer ratio model in West Concha Hockin, if we were to draw comparisons, is a hundred and forty-five to one, all right? That's well below the standards that were ever set years ago. So, they actually, you know, don't say this, but I guess they should probably be laying people off, but they're secret safe with me. But with that in mind, the problem is that we have these four issues and we're ignoring some of these issues that we have to address. So if we can move to the next slide, I think it'll be helpful.
Chief, I'd like to get a little more specific. That model advocates for a ratio of six hundred to one, is that correct?
It used to advocate for a ratio of six hundred to one, but then what they would do is the International Association of Chiefs of Police went towards other three categories. It was basically increasing population, workload, officer safety. So they started the way less amount on resident-to-officer ratio.
And what is our current officer doing?
Our current officer, and I'm going to get into that, actually, Mayor, if you can, I'll give me a chance to get to the slide. I have it all mapped out. So, I'm sorry, Samantha.
I'm sure.
And Mayor, if I'm standing in the way, just let me know. So, right now, in 2021, for our last census, our residents are four thousand three hundred and forty-five. That's where we're at, all right? It's not unreasonable for us to go up about, thinking about this, and we're probably being conservative with these numbers in terms of population. In 2022, by the beginning, or by the summer, a little, maybe about shorter than next year, I guess you can.
Yeah, that's fine. All right, darn it.
Here, I can catch it right here. I can catch it right here. So, it's not unreasonable to think in 2022 that our population is going to increase by fifty-five to sixty. That's probably being conservative, all right? Considering the developments that we're going to have. In 2023, your population could jump up another fifty. Again, I think we're being conservative. And here's the highlighted number that we're going to use, 2024. So two years from this number here at forty-four hundred, you could possibly be at forty-five hundred. And again, probably being conservative about the number considering the projects. Right now, we have one fourteen Forest Avenue that's coming to completion in December, probably going to be occupied soon thereafter. In addition to that, we have one oh-two and two oh-three. We have two oh-three Havard and one oh-two Forest that are currently in progress. Everybody knows that. And then at six fifty Montgomery Avenue, we have the Old Ol' Brecks. That's in the future and that's going to be, that's going to be a big one as well. So if you look at this as a baseline, this forty-five hundred number, as we move into our next slides, and you can see in 2025, it'll go even beyond that forty-five hundred. At least that's just a question mark of speculation. But again, everything that we've determined between myself, Samantha, and the mayor was very conservative in terms of numbers. We're probably underestimating the numbers, but we wanted to make sure that we took things into consideration. So, by comparison, I started to look at three jurisdictions within Montgomery County by comparison. So, in the borough of Jenkentown, which obviously is in Montgomery County, the population is four thousand four hundred and eight people, according to their website. Square mileage is point six, very similar to ours. Right now, they have one chief, two lieutenants, two sergeants, four officers, one detective, one administrative assistant who's full-time. If you take one lieutenant out, because that lone lieutenant is administrative, by the way, you have one operational patrol lieutenant, two operational patrol sergeants, and four officers. If you take that number and you divide that population, your resident-to-officer ratio is six twenty-nine to one. That's probably pretty ideal. Jenkentown has a downtown area with a business district and many apartments, much like Norbert, much like Norbert. Can you go next one? So, the borough of West Concha Hockin, the population is one thousand four hundred and fifty-eight. The square mileage is probably roughly point nine miles. There's one chief of police, there's two sergeants, there's eight officers, there's one detective, one full-time administrative assistant. As I mentioned before, the resident-to-officer ratio is one forty-five to one. And that's using two sergeants and eight officers. That doesn't include the chief, it doesn't include the detective, or obviously the administrative assistant. The issue with West Concha Hockin is their activity increases dramatically Monday through Friday because of their office space in that community. The borough of Ambler, another good comparison. So, they're just north of six thousand in residents. The square mileage is probably point eight-five. They have one chief, they have three sergeants, eleven officers, one detective, one full-time administrative assistant. I talked to the chief yesterday personally, myself, they're in the process of hiring two more full-time officers right now. They will jump up to thirteen full-time officers. The resident-to-officer ratio is four sixty-three to one, probably a little low, and it's going to get even lower with that. The similarity with Ambler to Norbert is, again, much like Jenkentown, they have a downtown area with a business district and many apartments. If you know what Norbert, obviously, and everybody here does, we have the Montgomery County Court, Montgomery County, what is it, the Montgomery Court Apartments, Price Avenue, two fourteen Price. We have the Windmont Condos and Apartments. We have multiple complexes throughout the borough, including three hundred North Essex Avenue, which is a big complex run by the Metro Police Management Company. So we have multiple apartment towers. So we're very similar to Jenkentown and very similar to Ambler in many ways, in terms of characteristics along residence. So, right now, if we look at forty-five hundred as a baseline, if we look at forty-five hundred as a baseline, taking myself out of the picture, because of my obligations administratively, projects, meetings, if we look at one sergeant and four officers, our current status is nine hundred to one. That's nine hundred residents to one officer. Now, according to the Matrix report that was done four years ago, David, this is four years ago, they recommended that we have six officers, one sergeant and five officers. That ratio would be seven fifty to one. If we have seven officers, which is a recommendation I have, we would be on around six forty-three to one. Eight officers is a future staffing goal, and I'll flesh this out a little further in the next slide. Can you actually go next slide? So, maybe it's another slide down there. So, I think overall, what we have to start to do is look at workload. So the total number of radio calls, if you look at that, in 2019, we were at one thousand five hundred and seventy-five. In 2020, we were at one thousand eighty-eight, all right? And the reason that we dropped in 2020 is because of the virus, because of the pandemic. There was virtually a lot of activity that was different. The borough kind of closed down, much like a lot of communities. I believe that's the reason for the drop. So as of August twenty-first, August thirty-first, 2021, we're at eight hundred and fifty-one radio calls. I did an analysis, did a trend, and if you look at things, it looks like we're probably going to land somewhere between thirteen hundred and fourteen hundred radio calls. We're going back up close towards that number, one thousand five hundred and seventy-five. As a matter of fact, this number is probably somewhat a little bit of a lowball, conservative number. I believe it's probably going to hit somewhere close to there, if not just, you know, just around that area. So some of these, the one thing I mentioned earlier is that some of these calls require a two-person response, which often requires backup officers from Lower Merion if two Norbert officers are not working together, or if I'm unavailable administratively, meetings, and other obligations.
Chief, sorry. Quick semantic question for everyone here. Radio calls, the definition of that, that is when someone calls down one?
That's calls for service. So, radio calls are calls for service, and we'll flesh that a little further out in the next slides. So, you don't have to go over it. So, the average, so the average radio calls will probably gain as Norbert gains more residents as business grows during the next five years, all right? And this does not include radio calls that are handled exclusively by Lower Merion PD. This is just us, all right? So, and you can move to the next slide. So the record management system that we use is called Metro Alert by Central Square Technology. It is a state-of-the-art system that many municipal police departments in Montgomery County use, and we use it as well. So our version is Visual Alert version two point O. It was revised in January of 2021. That is without a doubt one of the most comprehensive systems that I've seen in policing since nineteen eighty-nine. It is excellent. It has so many capabilities and it is very versatile. So, the average number of police reports entered in 2018, when I first got here, was one to three, all right? In 2019, it was three to five. This is daily, a daily average. 2020, it was three to five. It just kind of stays stagnant. Recently, during this year, it's been about five to seven. So as I go down here, all calls for service are entries into the record management system, but not all entries are calls for service. So in other words, you have log-up reports at the police station, you have traffic enforcement that is tracked in record management system. So that's the reason for your daily entries of five to seven. The average has increased. The one thing that I demand that all officers do is all traffic enforcement are mandatory entries. So you have to make sure that you put that information into our record management system to track each individual car stop. And that's in addition to whatever they give, a traffic violation notice, which is a warning, a faulty equipment notice, which is a warning, or a traffic citation, which they have to be responsible for. So regardless of whether it's a warning or a traffic citation for a hazardous mover or a non-hazardous mover, they have to enter that information into the record management system and they have to provide information about the driver and the recent stop. So that's a mandatory entry that all officers have to make, and they do a great job of it.
Chief, can you please explain the differential between the year before you were, the number of the year right as you came in and why it went up?
Sure. So, as you start to see 2018, one to three, I came in here in May of 2018, one to three. What Lower Merion was doing, what Lower Merion does, and I think it had an adverse effect, unfortunately, on Norbert, is they're known for eighty-six and a lot of jobs. What will happen is an officer will go out there and they'll provide response to a radio call. If there's very little to no action taken by a police officer, they'll raise a supervisor by, on the air, and they'll ask that supervisor if they can clear that job without any report to follow, with no entry into the record management system. I do not agree with that. I do not like that. So, anytime a police officer goes out to a location and they take any action, that information should be documented in your record management system for liability reasons to insulate the borough, under, you know, frivolous claims, false accusations, whatever the case may be. In addition to that, now, in Lower Merion's defense, they're much busier than we are. I can see why they do infect eighty-six jobs, what's known as eighty-six hundred jobs. However, we are not, and we need to enter that information in, and again, I just think it's bad practice. I think regardless of the ages.
You believe it was due to underreporting?
I believe it was underreporting.
So it's your opinion that crime has not increased here, there was lack of reporting of what was happening?
Absolutely, Mayor, absolutely. And I think unfortunately, it was just a practice that happened, it was part of a culture, and when you got, you know, when you had different leadership that arrived here in 2018, the practice simply stopped. And now it's different. But with that in mind, the one thing I wanted to stress, and I'll get into additional slides, crime did not increase. Even though our reporting is more accurate and our entries are there, crime did not increase in the borough. So we are very safe, and I'll get into the next slide. So, this is where we get into uniform crime reporting. So the average number of monthly offenses reportable Pennsylvania Uniform Crime Reporting Database has climbed since 2018. But again, it's not because crime has increased, it's just because of accuracy in reporting. So in 2018, there was probably an average of three to five jobs per month that were being reported to the Pennsylvania Uniform Crime Reporting Database, the online database, which is mandatory. It's likely due to underreporting and, most importantly, incorrect coding, all right? This is through no fault of the officers. They did not have formal training in uniform crime reporting, how to classify or code jobs. So for instance, I'll give you an example. An officer would respond to a domestic disturbance inside the borough, that defines the borough. That job, in fact, would actually constitute simple assault, which is an eight-hundred series code, and then reportable to the state. But unfortunately, it would stay in the thirty-six-hundred series as a classification, and the state would not capture that number. So that's a problem. So what we had to do was we had to make sure that we paid attention to classification and coding. You know, the devil's in the details, but that must be done. It's part of administration and policing. So what happened was, that was the reason there for your three to five. As I came on board and I was here in 2019, it was five to ten. 2020 was eight to fourteen, and then 2021 averaged about fifteen to twenty. Again, it's not that crime has increased, it's just that we are much more accurate in terms of reporting. So, this is the bulk of what's reported to our, to Pennsylvania Uniform Crime Reporting Database every month. Fraud, identity theft, harassment by communication, and summary offenses like public drunken is constitutes most of our monthly reporting to the Uniform Crime Reporting Database. Part one offenses such as murder, rape, robbery, and aggravated assault rarely ever occur in our borough. They just does not occur, all right? And we're very fortunate in that regard. I can give you an example. There have been three robberies that have occurred in the borough since I've been here. I've been here for three and a half years. The first one occurred October twenty-second, 2018. The next two that occurred had a domestic-related connection. It was a domestic nexus. So it wasn't like there was a problem or a worry or a concern for the community overall. We only had one robbery that was a legitimate robbery, and again, that occurred in October of 2018. So you can see, just by those three, those summaries about those three incidents, that we don't have a problem like that. But one of our, the most serious crime problem that we have is theft from auto and simple assault. Those are the most serious crimes that we will report with any type of consistency, all right? It's a Pennsylvania Uniform Crime Reporting Database. The one thing I like to do is actually talk a little bit and just kind of get down a little rabbit hole. I'll give you an example about when Lower Merion happens to cover the borough. So back in June, we had a rash of theft from autos and a rash of attempted theft from autos back in June. The situation repeated itself about a month later in July. On both of those days, Lower Merion was covering the borough. A Norbert police officer was not on duty. So, a Lower Merion was covering, now granted, in their defense, they had a theft from auto problem the very same nights. So, but they're always, they're always saying that, you know, they'll take twenty-two and twenty-four car and they'll patrol through our borough. Simply not happening. What they do is they respond to radio calls. So I'm confident, and I mean this in sincerity, that if we had a Norbert police officer on duty, I'm not saying that the whole pattern would have been stopped. I'm not saying that the whole blip or trend would have stopped. But what I am confident is, knowing that the officers are so conscientious when they're after on patrol, they try to go through each and every street. So if there was a theft from auto that occurred, right, maybe one or two, they would have caught it, they would have interceded. So it wouldn't have went on to seven, it wouldn't have went to five or eight, the numbers that were reflected back in June and back in July. They would have been able to stop it. The person that was operating in June and July, all right, there was also two stolen cars that were involved. cars that were involved. One was recovered in Upper Chichester in Delaware County, and one was recovered in the 16th District of Philadelphia. So taking that into consideration, that night, on those two nights that it happened, again, Lower Marion was dealing with their own issues. I'm, I'm not, I'm, believe me, I'm not taking shots of them. They've been quite a partner for us for the past three, three and a half years, and I mean that. But I am confident that Norbert officers, if there was one on duty, would have somehow interceded in that situation. Because the person, again, going back to the person that was doing it, the person responsible, that was something that happened in 15 minutes. It didn't happen in 20 minutes. It took hours to go through these cars. Some of these cars were rummaged through from front to back. There was nothing taken from inside. It was attempted theft from autos. Some of these cars had already been stolen, like cell phones, laptops, um, cameras, as well as change and loose currency that was in the car. Unfortunately, one of the problems that we have in the borough, and everybody knows this, is not one broken window. Nobody is breaking into a car here in the borough. The car doors unfortunately are being left open, and that's what happens. So when the two stolen cars happened here, I knew right away based on the make and model of the car, it's like there's no way that they could steal that car without having access to the key. I said they had to have access to the key. Well, as it turned out, further investigation revealed that the key was left in both of those incidents with stolen auto. So that's one of the issues that we have, and we're trying to educate myself and the mayor, the mayor's daughter on Facebook. We talk about, make sure you lock your car doors, make sure you lock your doors to your house, make sure you don't leave the key secreted in the inside of your car. Because it's just going to invite bad things, and that's an example of what happened. But again, that person doing that had ample time, a lot of time, before they saw a police officer coming down the street, a lot of time. Because it took hours over the course of the night. That was something, again, that did not happen in a short period. So burglary, can you go back one second? So burglary as an occurrence in our community is, is very unusual, and often it involves a domestic relationship. It's often, that's like the nexus to it. So we don't often see that. Now, knock on wood, before I started here, in 2017, they had a serious rash of burglaries in Lower Marion and Norbert, and that was included. But we've been very fortunate, we haven't seen anything lately, uh, during the past three years. You can go to the next slide. So here's our current structure as we have it right now. So the chief of police, my direct reports are one police sergeant, one parking controller, and the school crossing guards. The indirect reports are four police officers. And I'd like to talk about that for just one second because it's important. So if these officers happen to have a, a serious situation that happens in the borough, and they contact the sergeant off duty, we would have to pay that sergeant overtime for those phone calls. We'd have to pay that sergeant for being bothered off duty. Well, that's why you have a salary chief. That's why you have an at-will chief. So those officers have to contact me directly when they're working and Sergeant Fornaccio is not working and he's off duty. So they contact me, it's at no cost to the borough obviously, so I take those calls. So those are my indirect reports. Again, when the sergeant's not working and I'm here, the officers become my indirect slash direct reports. So we, you know, we share those responsibilities. The police sergeant, his indirect reports are four police officers and zero personnel, uh, non-sworn personnel at this time. I keep the parking control and the school crossing guards under me because I want him to concentrate on performance, activity, and overall training and discipline for these four officers during his probationary status for his first year. Uh, and then after that, we, we may, you know, we may call and audible and go in different ways. So the mayor, as you know, oversees the police, um, and the chief reports directly to the mayor. So the relationship though with the chief of police and the borough manager is a close one. All right? So we work on police operations and borough operations together. They intersect daily, budget, strategic planning, policy development, personnel, labor issues, training, discipline, third-party contracts. We do, we do all sorts of things together. Myself, Sean Matrix, Samantha, Matt West, we, we all did things together. We work closely for, on him in many ways. Um, you can go next, Samantha, thank you. I really appreciate you doing this for me too, Samantha. I know it's important to sit there and do that. So here is what I would like to think is the immediate needs assessment according to Matrix. Uh, this is my add one administrative assistant, but it's five police officers. So in 2017, Matrix recommended a staffing increase by two officers for a total of six, one sergeant and five officers. This was in addition to the hiring of a chief with experience and education, at-will from the outside, but sworn, but not represented by an FOPI. Uh, since then, the chief has been appointed, but only one of those two has appointed. That was Officer Dan Dutton, who's been here roughly three and a half years. So, um, right there, this is the recommendation from Matrix in 2017, right there. That's four years ago. Um, and then as you go down from my recommendation, there's also an immediate need to hire an administrative assistant for clerical duties, phone call management, appointment scheduling, lockup service, and other miscellaneous administrative duties within the office, um, which I didn't get into further. But as you noticed through all those comparisons, whether it was Jenkins Town, West County Hockin, or Ambler, there was a full-time administrative assistant assigned to each one of those departments. So we're one of the few, probably in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, that doesn't, doesn't have one for a full-time police department. Uh, does anybody have any questions about that one part? Fred?
So would, uh, would Lower Marion still be handling like dispatch and 911, or would, you know, under your proposal, would that be enhanced?
Well, we can actually get into that about the hours, and I'm, and I'm actually going to, we fleshed a lot of information out, so we can actually get into that. So if you can hold off Fred on that one question, I think I'll answer.
Okay, chief, I think you have another question?
Oh, I'm sorry, Bob.
How often, how often do you respond as a second officer, yourself as a chief?
Oh, it happens quite frequently. Uh, for instance, I could be in the office and officer get involved in a car stop. Now, most traffic enforcement is solo, but I cannot, in good faith, as an officer plus a car stop at the corner of Havreford and Orthesics, sit there and not back that officer up when I hear that coming over. So I get out of the office, I go in and make sure that officer has that ample backup. In addition to that, if the officer responds to an alarm, I respond. If the officer needs assistance at a, a major traffic accident, I go out there and respond. If the officer just needs my request for a complaint about something that happens on the street, I go out there. If it's a medical response and it requires a two-person response, I'll go help the officer.
I understand, does the mayor have those stats?
I'm sorry?
Does the mayor have those stats?
I, as to each, each time he responds?
Each time?
No.
No, no, you know, I don't, I don't have them either, Bob. But I can tell you, it's, it's a daily occurrence. There's no doubt it's a daily occurrence. If I'm working with another officer, and in addition to that, also take this into consideration, when I'm working by myself, I go out there and I handle jobs when the officers aren't on duty, on a case-by-case basis. If it's something that's along, along Montgomery Avenue and Lower Marion can handle it, that's fine. But sometimes we may get a call for a late-reported hit-and-run auto accident, a parked unattended, something like that. I'll handle that job. I'll reach out to the complainant. I'll go out there and meet the complainant on location, a medical emergency. So I actually take that on myself and I make sure that that's done. So in addition to backing officers up, I actually handle jobs myself, acting in lieu of officers on duty. So right now, uh, just talking about Lower Marion coverage. So in 2020, we had a very unusual year. We had two officers that were all injured for protracted periods. We had one officer in the summer of 2020 who was deployed with the Army National Guard for an extensive period in June of 2020. During that time, our coverage by Lower Marion increased exponentially. We went up to roughly 2,300 hours annually. That is very unusual. The average coverage for us annually from Lower Marion is 1,500 hours. All right? That's approximately 125 hours a month. All right? Low, we keep the calendar, I keep the calendar, I keep a Lower Marion coverage calendar that I send directly over to the watch commander every month, letting them know, these are the exact hours when you have to cover. So that information from the time I started to right now is actually captured each month. So if they come back and say, hey, we covered this amount of hours, I could say, no, hold on, no, this is what we have you covering for, so this is the number. Now, I've got to give Lower Marion the benefit of the doubt on that because they often undercut their own covers numbers. My hours are actually more accurate than their hours. They actually, well, if they say, if I say that we were covering 175 hours a month, they may come in at like 155. They may actually be short themselves 20 hours. So, um, I rely on my numbers, uh, because I keep them and I maintain them throughout the month. So Lower Marion will get multiple calendars for the same month. So we'll give an intro calendar, a mid-month calendar, and then by the end of the month, they get a final calendar with the final total of numbers covered for that month. So as you start to look at the needs of hiring one more officer right away according to Matrix, all right? So if you look at our contract, here's the benefits of hiring one full-time officer. So if you take out 232 hours of paid time off, all right, which is what an officer gets in his or her first year, that leaves us with 1,952 hours of coverage that we're going to put on the streets of Norbert Borough. If you go further, so year one, you're adding that number, 1952, in more patrol hours. That equates to 163 hours a month. In addition to that, year two through five, and this is just based going on the PTO allowed by the contract, year two through five, you're adding eight, 1,868 more patrol hours. It equates to 156 hours per month. After year five, it adds 1,826 hours, because after year five, they get 126 hours of vacation. From year two through five, they get 84 annually. Year one in probation, you get no time, you get no vacation time whatsoever. You only have comp time, which is your calorie hours at 104, and you only have holiday hours at 104, and then you have personal leave, which is 24 hours. So that's what you have total. So if you start to move down, after year 10, you're 1,784 hours, it's 100, almost 150 hours per month still. Even after year 20, you're 1,742, it equates to 145 hours per month of coverage. So the benefits of immediate needs hire right away, you're increasing officer safety, we mentioned that, there's more service to the taxpayers, to the community. You're bringing in more outside experience because again, we are not a training-ground police department. We are a lateral transfer police department. When we look to take people in from a civil service exam, it's someone with experience. Case in point, every officer here, with the exception of one, came in with experience from another law enforcement agency. Officer Sean McCabe and Officer Matt Duffy came from the Philadelphia Police Department. Matt Duffy was assigned to the Center City District. Sean McCabe was a corporal in patrol operations. In addition to that, you have Mike Fornaccio. He's your longest-tendered employee. He's been here for 12 years. All right? He's, he's now vested, all right, after, as of August the 31st. He came from the Montgomery County Sheriff's Department. Dan Dutton was a police officer in Derby Borough. So we come with experience. It's a lateral transfer police department, even though there's a test. So there's more service to the taxpayers, again, brings in more outside experience, fosters professional development for the officers if we bring another officer in. Not only for the experience, but we get an opportunity with more coverage to send more officers to different training, training programs, seminars, symposias, and conferences, uh, to help with their professional development. Also, it improves morale, it's free to court, a sense of fellowship amongst the officers, undeniable. When you hire a new officer, it always is a shot in the arm for any police department. When Officer Dan Dutton was hired here on August 6th, 2018, I can tell you that the performance of the department jumped up exponentially from what I saw only a few short months before. It was a real shot in the arm. Uh, creates opportunities for other officers. For instance, you bring in more personnel, the one thing that we want to do in the Norbert Police Department is we want investigative independence, and we work towards that. Right now, again, we do our own investigations, we consort, we, we have our own conversations, and we submit our own criminal complaints to the Montgomery County District Attorney's Office. We have our own liaisons for different areas within the Montgomery County District Attorney's Office, whether it's Montgomery County, uh, I'm sorry, major crimes, or it's family violence. So we have our own liaisons, our own representatives that we submit criminal complaints to. We work with Montgomery County detectives on different jobs, and we work with Lower Marion detectives on an as-needed basis. But right now, we have more investigative independence. What we would like to do is this creates more opportunities for officers. We have a sergeant who was promoted in February of 2021. We would like to be able to have a patrol investigator, you know, and a detective that actually provides more service to the community, more investigative follow-up on jobs that are important. So victims, people who are victims of crime, whether it's a fraud or a theft, have follow-up. They have, they, you know, they have closure, and we can also clear jobs with arrest through criminal complaints. Or exceptionally clear if the complainant doesn't want to pursue and we know the name of the, uh, the person involved. So again, more investigative, and also too, it lessens the need for overtime. The one thing I wanted to mention here is there are many quarters, everybody knows periodically, that I will give information about overtime when it comes to the monthly report for a quarterly review. We have been as high as 48% reduction in, in overtime for some quarters versus other quarters. So we've done a tremendous job of controlling overtime. So if you have another officer, that's going to lessen the need for overtime. In addition to that, you're going to decrease the dependency on Lower Marion Township for police resources. The one bold point that I wanted to add was pension. You're going to lessen your pension liability by hiring another officer, because it's based on the three highest years, okay? So if you're cutting overtime, all right, you throw another officer, there's no need for overtime at the end of an officer's career, who's trying to do three higher years. So you're lowering that need for overtime, so therefore, their pension is based on their highest three, their last three years. So if you're cutting overtime like that with another officer, there's no doubt it's going to have an impact. Because they're not going to, there's no need for an officer to just be racking up overtime during their last three years before they go off the job. So now with that in mind, if you talk to any Norbert officer right now, they would welcome that, even though they know, even though they know at the end that there may be a loss because there may be more overtime available with one less officer or two less officers, they would certainly welcome the opportunity for these other options and alternatives if we hired another officer. So one administrative assistant, I think this is an important part. Myself and the chief have had, you know, um, some lengthy discussions about this, so...
Yourself and the borough?
I'm sorry? Oh yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, of, of course, yeah. We've, we, you know, uh, we've, we've all talked, talked about it, but I can tell you the most recent conversation was with the mayor. So it creates more opportunities for the chief to have face-to-face interaction with residents, business owners, and visitors, to find out what's important to them in terms of safety and security, and assume the role of an active listener to ensure the quality of service is delivered to the community by all personnel, including the parking controllers and the crossing guards. And it gives me time, or any chief for that matter, time to conduct foot and behavioral patrols to identify public safety needs. Also, it avails the chief time to work on grants and other projects to move the department forward, and it allows the chief, who has a dual role in this community as the emergency management coordinator, more time to work on emergency management initiatives with the Norbert Fire Company, Norbert Ambulance, Philadelphia Police Department, Sepulveda Police Department, and tracking to attend more emergency management-based training. Uh, because obviously, that's a big part of my role as well. Um, anyone have any questions about that? Any concerns?
Uh, Joe, so are you saying that by hiring one more officer with, say, 1,700 hours a year, then we couldn't cancel the MOU without Lower Marion, or you still need that MOU for backup?
No, what I, what I propose too, and as a matter of fact, Samantha and I have just discussed this, and we've discussed this at length. The one thing I can tell you is this about the MOU. It was finalized on August 26th. That MOU does not include a number. It does not have a financial component within that MOU. We wanted to make that a separate amendment between a conversation and agreement between the borough manager and the township manager. They have yet to have that conversation and nail down, and drill down all those details. What I'm saying is that if you look at 1,952 hours, and the average number of hours that are needed for Lower Marion coverage is roughly 1,500 hours, or even give, give it even more, but it's still below 1,952 hours. So even if you bake in an officer's training, which can incorporate some hours as well, you're still below that threshold of 1,952. So if you have Lower Marion covering us for 1,500 hours, the idea is yes, could you cancel? Could this almost cancel that? It all sets the need, certainly. But the problem is that you have, not that it's really a problem, it's a partnership. You use their, their lockup services, you use their salary court, you use their live scan, we use their investigative services on a limited basis for serious felonies, for serious crimes, for crimes and progress, and most importantly, they help us with training. We go through all our partnership certification with them outside Montgomery County Community College. So we do everything with Lower Marion. We work in partnership with them. We work as, we work jointly with them. Our relationship is excellent, and we can't thank them enough. But what I am saying, Rob, to your question, is as you start to look forward, all right, for that first year, all right, you, it's, it, the, the argument is, overall, yes, you basically are canceling out a need for patrol coverage from Lower Marion with the hiring of one more full-time officer. But things are going to come up, right? An officer's going to call out sick. There's going to be an emergency vacation, a sick child, whatever the case may be. At some point in time, you may have to get Lower Marion to cover. But I can tell you that that's going to be a rare occasion, that's going to be on a case-by-case basis. So my recommendation, and we can certainly talk about this further, do we look at different ideas? For instance, do we get a baseline number for services provided from Lower Marion? For the salary court, for the lockup, for the live scan services, and the training that they afford to us each year as a partnership? Do we get a baseline number for that? And then, for coverage, do we look at it on an as-needed basis, an hourly basis, instead of baking a flat line, a blanket coverage number into that? And that should have to be discussed. I don't know, Samantha, have you wanted to add anything to that?
Yeah, I mean, just real back to the napkin sort of numbers. I mean, if you look at the potential savings from overtime and you look at the impact to Lower Merion MOU, if Lower Merion were amenable to that as well, you know, for a probationary officer, I think the numbers would come pretty close. Now, that comes the caveat that of course a probationary officer has, you know, their pay increases each year and that sort of thing. But I think the chief is right in that if council wanted to go in that direction or at least have that conversation, you know, obviously again, we need to talk to Lower Merion about what their appetite for something like that would be. And we have to actually drill down some numbers on it as well. But I think there's enough value to the idea that it's, you know, council wants to go in that direction. We're not completely in the realm of imagination man or anything like that. I think there is some validity to what the chief is saying here in terms of the cost, you know, offsetting each other.
And the other realistic approach is to that, Lower Merion would welcome that. They would welcome less coverage to the borough. They have their own challenges right now. They have, their numbers are increasing, they're busy, they're trying to hire more officers, they're having their own challenges right now as we speak. I had a recent conversation with the township supervisor, Ernie McNeely, a real gentleman. He was telling me some of the things that they're facing right now. So they would welcome the fact that we would do something like this, that we would depend less on them in certain areas. They certainly welcomed the change when it came to investigations. We rewrote the entire MOU. We were responsible, really, we're the ones that actually crafted it. You know, the nine pages, it was shorter and now it's nine pages to really insulate and protect the borough's interest in terms of this cooperation.
So in theory, in theory, if we could negotiate with Lower Merion to negotiate the MOU number down to, from the coverage hours that we have, down to a much, much smaller number or even, you know, just per as-needed basis, get the, pay them as-needed basis, there's a potential, you know, coverage that we paid for that would more or less cover the cost of a probationary officer.
Yeah, I think what I think we could do before making any commitments, sending numbers or anything like that, is I think there are two components that, and I would be willing to, you know, help you all figure this out. We would need to mock up now we have a big contract with the police department, what the cost of an officer would be throughout the officer's probationary period to full-time officer. And then through conversation with Lower Merion, find out what sort of hourly rate they would want to charge or what sort of agreement we would be looking at. And then we can actually have, you know, set of numbers to compare.
The other thing to keep in mind is an additional officer would be just, you know, not just Lower Merion covering the borough and paying for a general, general inquiry coverage, we'd actually have an officer in the borough, on the streets of the borough, going up and down the streets and interacting with residents and visitors. So we'd have someone who's invested, specifically invested in our community.
It's like the mayor said, if you look at our five officers, they're stakeholders, they have skin in the game. That would be the same with an additional officer. Could you imagine if you duplicated another hire like Officer Dane Dutton? Because that's the potential out there. The other thing is that you're bringing in quality experience to this department. I can tell you that based on all my networking and policing right now in the Philadelphia region, if we post a job officer, a offer for one officer, two officers that we were going to hire during the course of the next couple of years, just one officer or whatever it is, we would have people around the block trying to apply for this job. Areas like Ben Salem, Northampton, Southampton, they are getting loaded. They're getting loaded with applicants that are coming from the city of Philadelphia, the Septa Police Department, the Antrak Police Department. We would have ample, ample applicants that would help us really select. And yeah, of course, this is a civil service process that you have to go through and you have to follow civil service guidelines. But I can tell you that the quality of the individual applicant would be there for us, much like it was for us a few years ago with Dane Dutton. And the person that was actually the second runner-up as well, who, by the way, just to let everyone know, that person was swept right up by a portion in Montgomery County only weeks after we spoke to him. So as we, so that's basically the one slide, I don't know, does anybody have any more questions about that? Is that the, what slide number is that? Can you go back up to the previous slide? I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry, okay, then I won't try. Yeah, if you go back down to the next one. So with that in mind, Norbert, right here, southeastern side of the state, right there. So if you can move to the next slide. Norbert, public safety, well worth the investment. So crime-grade award gives Norbert an A rating in terms of crime. Norbert is safer than 80% of the cities and towns in the United States of all population sizes. In 2019, Norbert was named as one of the best places to live in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, one of the best. So in my opinion, take that into consideration, you want to build on that, you want to make sure as you look towards the future, look towards past the professional safety I have in front of you right now, past the chief of police, past the borough manager. Look at the future for your families, for your community. What type of commitment do you want in terms of safety and security? I can tell you for the past three and a half years, it's been nothing but my honor to serve each and every one of you and more importantly, the taxpayers, the residents, the business owners, the visitors that come in here and add flavor to our community. All right, so I think it's well worth the investment. And as you move down. So the one thing I'd like to do is I'd like to thank the mayor, I'd like to thank Borough Council, I'd like to thank the Norbert Fire Company, Ambulance and Lower Merion Police Department for their support. Most importantly, I'd like to thank, and I know there's people right now on the line on Zoom, all residents, all business owners and all visitors. On behalf of the police department, I would like to thank you personally. And that was my next slide.
Thank you, chief.
A comprehensive presentation, so you get some applause.
Yeah.
Any questions for the chief at the conclusion of the presentation? Maybe council would like to, you know, percolate on that and it will be part of the, it's available now that you've presented it. Take a look at it. Go from there. And I will be honest with you, I had so many more slides that I was at, but in the interest of time, you know, I wanted to make sure it was been scaled, you know, really scaled down to an executive model for everybody here tonight to just think about. But with that in mind, if anybody has any questions for me directly, feel free to reach out to me. You know, if we want to talk about this, whether it's, you know, Fred and I have had conversations about different things through email, text, anybody has any questions, feel free to give me a call. In addition to that, that's available if anybody wants to look at it and it's always readily accessible at your fingertips.
Chief, I might suggest if you do have other slides, which are in a finished state, that weren't part of the oral presentation, but you would like to include.
Sure.
Informationally for us to look at. I think each of us is a bit of information sponges, that's what landed us these jobs. So it would be good.
Absolutely. And the only reason that I include some of that is just in the interest of time and there were bigger conversations. As a matter of fact, that's one of the reasons I scaled down the presentation about vehicles because not going to tell anybody's intelligence here, everybody knows the situation on our vehicles, same thing with our police station. You know, to bore you with the details on that would just be overkill. So that's basically the presentation on what we're looking at and as you start to look forward, I think that those things are the right direction to go for our community. And I think ultimately, as the mayor has emphasized this and stressed this repeatedly, it's better service to our borough. It's better service to our borough that we're going to give. It's safety for the officers and it's deliverables that can't be measured. And overall, I think it's going to save us money and it's going to strengthen our partnership factor with Lower Merion because we'll be less dependent on them. And believe me, they would welcome the change. So I really appreciate everybody's time. I know there was, I know there was a meeting before this that was in attendance and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. All right, this manager.
All right, thank you, council president. So my presentation has 35 slides. That being said, we're not going to go through all 35, they're really more for the benefit of anyone who doesn't have a chance to watch this presentation and it is more of a, I forget the word, someone who prefers a read as opposed to listen to things. Some of the gloss over some of those, there'll be ample opportunity for questions during and at the end of the presentation. All right, so what we're going to talk about briefly here is general financial analysis of borough, a baseline, what I call the baseline budget review. I originally called it the vanilla budget and then we got into too many metaphors about food and that made me too hungry. So we'll go through some budget requests that I've received from other organizations as well as my own request I have for council to consider and then talk about what our next steps are going to be after tonight. So I'd like to start, we're not going to go through this whole list, I'd like to start.
Share it on Zoom, that you have the screen.
Oh, sorry, thank you. Sorry about that for people on Zoom. Got too excited about giving this presentation. All right, so we're not going to go through all this, this is just so like people know some of the things that their taxpayer dollars are getting from them. I also wanted explicitly note, this isn't really something that you can see directly in the budget, but I wanted to emphasize for council and the public, we're going to talk a lot about spending borough money tonight. That's not the only thing that staff thinks about. We do regularly think about how to save taxpayer money as well. And this slide captures some of the thought process on that and some of the, you know, things we've been doing with that. And if anyone ever wants to hear all about that, I'm happy to take some time to talk about it. All right, various points here tonight, I'm going to reference the GFOA. The GFOA is the Government Finance Officers Association. It's sort of the, you know, largest external body that has resources in regards to budgeting and finance and best practices. All right, so just a quick overview, I apologize if members of council know this already, but just so we're all on the same information base, the borough uses what's called fund accounting because a lot of our revenues are dedicated for certain purposes and thus have to be in their own fund and ensure they're tracked and spent appropriately. The borough has six funds, which we'll go into in detail and later in the presentation. And in terms of our accounting methods, we use what's called modified accrual. And I have a definition of that on the slide for everyone. So talking about accounting for a minute, these are not issues that affect dollars and cents and revenues and expenses directly in the budget, but were some issues that I've found just while working through the budget process that I would like to address by the end of the year here. Number one is that the borough right now has bank accounts kind of all over the place. We have accounts at Citizens, Customers, Pliggett and TD Ameritrade. And I believe the purpose of that was to try and get higher interest returns for our accounts. Unfortunately, if you look at borough interest revenue over time, it's dropped off pretty dramatically and honestly, there's no bank really offering any substantial interest right now. I tried talking to Citizens, I tried talking to PNC, I tried talking to Wispis. It's just not a good rate environment. So given that situation, I would like council to consider consolidating our accounts with one bank to save on administrative overhead of having to deal with so many different things. I would be fine with the pension remaining with TD Ameritrade because that would be a whole thing to move it, but I would love to consolidate the Pliggett Customers Accounts to Citizens. Also, speaking of bank accounts, historically, our debt proceeds have been deposited in one bank account and the challenge with that is again, similar to fund accounting, when you take out debt, you can only take it out for a specific purpose. And if the money is all commingled in one bank account, it makes it very difficult to sort out how much money there is and what has been spent on. And for example, I had to submit an audit report to the county last week for our streetlight loan. And so I had to individually go through every transaction in the bank account, flag the ones that were related to the streetlight account and then send the information to the county. Another example where this is a problem is reviewing the loan we got for the roof at Sabine Avenue. I found that there is still $58,000 sitting in that loan account, which we could use, you know, to help pay off the loan or, you know, reduce our expenses. We've also had some findings from our auditor about how bank transfers were handled. So again, I think the less complexity, the less trouble we can get ourselves into when it comes to our bank accounts. Fund balance policy. FNA talked a little bit about this when we were talking about the ARPA funds from federal government. The GFOA recommends, and I think actually the previous manager talked to council in past presentations about this, the borough needs to maintain at least 15% of expenses or two months' worth in fund balance in order to avoid cash flow issues. And I give the prior management a lot of credit for getting the borough fund balance and council, for getting the borough fund balance to a place where the borough doesn't have to borrow money to get through the winter and all that. The last thing I noticed with the budget is the chart of accounts. So that's, to give a definition, that's like how we're assigning revenue and expenses. The state has a standardized version of it so that you can compare apples to apples when comparing municipal finances. Our chart of accounts aren't always completely accurate with it. Also, prior management, which I think is a great thing, was splitting a number of expenses between departments. However, it wasn't consistently done, so health insurance, for example, the portion for admin, fire, public works and police were each tracked separately. However, life insurance, which is a minor expense, but life insurance, for example, was just one item in the admin section of the budget. So I just want us to be more consistent about how we're tracking those things. Debt management, we're not going to go through this whole slide, but just to hit on it real quick here, I think we all agree the borough should only ever take out debt for a capital project. If we start taking out, bringing, offering expenses, we really need to have a conversation. As discussed in our prior capital plans, you know, there is a certain philosophical element to capital spending of should you take out debt for it or should you use what's called a pay-as-you-go model, which is where you save up over time and then pay for it? My philosophy is that the debt process is more equitable because then the individuals who are benefiting from a capital expenditure are also the people who are paying for the capital expenditure. Now, the challenge you get into with that is of course there's interest associated with any borrowed project. But I think with our current rate environment, I think I'd rather go with the more equitable option as long as interest rates are where they are right now. Also, the borough does have a debt limit, we can't just, you know, take on all the debt we want. And our debt limit is currently a little over $14 million. That being said, just because we can borrow $14 million, I certainly don't think they should. And I think prior borough managers, when talking about the capital plan, spoke to council in that regard. Grant policy. The borough council and finance administration committees recently adopted a grant policy for the borough. You can refer to that if needed. The only thing I'll make for the budget is anything that we apply for until we know the outcome on it, I do have it in the budget to ensure we have any required matching funds available. Specifically for the 2022 budget, that would include the match we would need for the county transportation grant for the stormwater bump outs that we applied for. The other thing I did when trying to evaluate our budget priorities and the requests that were made is I tried wherever possible to tie them back to the comprehensive plan. That being said, we've done a lot of plans since we did the comprehensive plan and I just didn't have the bandwidth at the time to tie back to every single plan the borough has done. So it might be proposals that don't tie to the comprehensive plan that might tie to a plan that came later. All right, so what is the baseline budget? The baseline budget, formerly known as the vanilla budget, is what would happen if borough council took no action? So for whatever reason, we all went into a coma after tonight, this is what would happen to the borough financially. Funding is only allocated for, you know, the day-to-day services that we would provide ordinarily and any contractual obligations that the borough has. So all the financial impacts that I list with each request are how they would affect this baseline budget, which I did provide a copy of with the packet. And anywhere I note current or projected financials, they're as of August 30th. All right, so the general fund, as the name kind of implies, that's basically the fund for all the money that we have that we can just kind of do, you know, whatever we need or want to. There aren't any specific, you know, restrictions on that money. It's basically the money that we use for our operating expenses, you know, and in the budget itself, it's broken out separately into admin, fire, police, public works, debt service and grants. The only exceptions to what I just said are the money we get for state fire aid and state pension aid also do go into the general fund and we're then required to then immediately pay that money to our fire relief association and into the borough pension fund. All right, so the general fund revenue, this isn't drastically changed from prior years. The vast majority of our revenue, more than two-thirds, comes from property taxes. We then have a bit of it that's labeled fees and fines, but that also includes things like real estate transfer tax and business privilege tax. You see a good chunk here from grants and that's mostly tied to the grants and aid, that's mostly tied to the bridge project, state pension aid, state fire aid. Interest, you'll see, as I mentioned earlier, is non-existent. And then, let's see here, rental revenue, which that's both Sabine as well as, you know, the properties, other properties, the borough homes. And then miscellaneous is like insurance dividends and interest and stuff, or I'm sorry, interest is separate. That's insurance dividends and reimbursements and that sort of thing. So since real estate taxes make up such a large portion of our budget, I do want to take a couple of slides to talk in detail about those. This is the obligatory slide that every manager everywhere, every year has to give. Our taxes are virtually nothing compared to the school district. You know, people pay their tax bill, they take all the taxes out of the borough and I'm sure every year from now until eternity, every town will try to tell people that. So for borough tax rates, the part we can control, there have been, you know, just some steady increases over time. There's a couple of different philosophies on how to handle tax increases. One is just you do a little one every year and then that way you avoid, people can expect it, you keep up with inflation, that sort of thing. The other philosophy is, you know, if you do it when you need it, which does tend to result in one-time larger increases, probably over time, they both end up with the same impact over time, it's just how you want to time and schedule it. So you have your mileage rates and then you have your assessments, those two things together determine what your actual taxes you pay are. There's some information here about how the assessment process works. Historically, there hasn't been much growth in the borough's assessed property rate. I think that's going to change considerably starting next year, as the chief mentioned in his. As the chief mentioned in his presentation, and as we saw earlier tonight, the borough has a number of land developments in process. And as those happen, our assessment values are going to change and increase. And for the larger projects, the 203 Abraford, 114 Forest, 650 Montgomery, to name a few, there's going to be substantially new property tax revenue that are going to come from those projects. So the general fund for this year, looks like we're going to have a pretty healthy surplus at the end of this year of $380,000. However, before we break out the party favors and all that, a lot of it's one-time things. So for example, the money from the federal government, it's $227,000. We will get a similar allotment again next year, and then that's it for that money. We got a bunch of delinquent property taxes this year because of tax referrals and things with COVID from 2020. And then also this year, the boroughs had a number of staff turnover. So administrative and public work staff and benefit expenses have been down considerably this year. So looking at 2022, this baseline budget, the borough would have, again, a pretty large surplus. However, that's largely driven by the COVID money from the federal government. And like I mentioned, the baseline budget only has, it's cut pretty much to the bone. And there's a number of things in there I know we're going to want to fund that we've historically funded, such as the shade tree commission. Now, the good news with these two one-time surpluses is looking at the fund balance in the general fund, we would be above, we would be $263,000 above the minimum fund balance that we want to maintain of $700,000. Now, the trick with all this is any new expenses we approve, some of those are going to be recurring expenses. And I wouldn't want them to eat into that fund balance beyond this year. If council were to approve all the proposals that are presented to them, the general fund would still have a surplus next year of $127,000. Those proposals, I'm going to go real quick through these. There's a fair number of them, and again, they're on the, I mean, I'd like council to weigh in where possible on these. I'm just going to find the right spot to stick this so I can actually read them all. So on the revenue side, I would like to do an audit of Comcast and Verizon for their franchise fees. There would be legal expenses involved in doing that. But generally, everywhere else, I've done three of them in the past. There's always a net revenue gain usually from doing those audits. Working with borough staff on the fee schedule, fairly soon, probably later this month or next month, council's going to give a proposal for an updated fee schedule. The thing I want to emphasize about fees, fees are not taxes. Fees have to pay for the cost of a service, but that does include the overhead. And the borough has done an okay job getting, paying back yurkeys what we owe them for their services. That doesn't always happen. And more importantly, the borough isn't really capturing any of its overhead either. So the administrative staff time answering questions, preparing paperwork, the lights, the phone, da-da-da-da-da. So there are some fee changes that I'd like to propose doing. Recycling enforcement. So the borough gets a grant from the state each year based upon the tonnage of recycling. And as part, and it's also documented in the comp plan, I would really appreciate the chance to go through an enforcement process to make sure that property owners in the borough are following those guidelines. Talking about inflation, this is one of the most biased recommendations I have as inflationary raises for borough staff. I think for all the staff currently, it might be a little soon to talk about any merit increases. Our office manager has been here a month so far. Our assistant to the manager has been in that role for two months, and I've been working here four months. But inflationary, given the environment we're in, I think we'd all be grateful for if council is willing to consider. How do I, there we go. The Norberg Civic Association asked for the borough to consider purchasing improved audio equipment for our public meetings. This is going to be a detailed presentation to FNA later this month. Working with the assistant to the manager, there's a proposal for Micah software to improve the borough work order process and how we respond to residents. I've also asked, we're using QuickBooks 2017 right now. I would like to upgrade to QuickBooks 2021. Our auditor this year actually wasn't sure if she was going to be able to look at our QuickBooks files because of how outdated they are. Let's see here. Another project the assistant to the manager took a look at is whether it makes sense to bring in someone like Scan Tech to help us organize the physical records. And again, that's going to be a more detailed proposal for council to consider down the line. Our planning commission asked for a membership in the American Planning Association to get access to the resources they have. I also would like some trainings for myself and the administrative staff, most notably the APMM conference, the Pell Raz conference, our dues to the Montgomery County Consortium of Municipalities, and a ICMA membership. And I'm happy to have a further discussion as to how the borough would benefit from those. I also think that we need to find, we'll talk about it a little bit later tonight, but I think we may need to find some continued planning and support for 201 Sabine. I also think in order to do improvements in Norberg Park, we need to finish up a master plan for that property in order to move forward with some things there as well. This is, I actually jumped the gun a little bit. These topics are going to come before infrastructure and public safety next month. And that would be to do sidewalk inspection, commercial fire inspection, and rental registration programs, many of which our comp plan does call for us to implement. Eventually, I would like to charge fees for some of those programs. But talking with our code enforcement officer, we would like to not charge fees the first year or two in order to encourage compliance with these new regulations as we work through that. I'm going to, and that would be a more detailed proposal for council. Historically, the borough has supported the Norberg Run. I think I attempted it this past year and saw the impact it has on the community. I would encourage Borough Council to continue to support the Norberg Run. That $3,000 pays for things like porta-potties, and to the chief's presentation earlier, extra support from Laura Marion Township, and staff overtime, that sort of thing. This is a number I'm not sure, we may need to increase or change. The Norberg Business Association, I wasn't able to get a specific number from them for what they would need for all the community events they're doing. Historically, the borough has given them about this much money. However, given the situation with the Fourth of July Committee and the additional responsibility that the NBA is taking on, I would actually probably encourage council to consider a number higher than the historical amount provided to them. You know, $15,000 here. I could definitely talk more to Ed Ridgeway about it, but maybe even like $25,000 or somewhere in that neighborhood might make more sense. Looking, talking about our Plan and Action Plan, you know, last year we, or this year we budgeted, sorry, $10,000 for that. There was a request to continue to allocate funding to advance those causes. Meeting with the Norberg Ambulance Company, the borough had historically provided annual contribution. And for whatever reason, probably COVID-related, in 2020, did not make that contribution. So they're asking that in 2022, we make up for 2020 and continue our traditional contribution to them. Here's one of the biggies, and sorry, I just need to clear my throat for a second. I am going to ask some council on the capital fund for a little bit substantial funding for improvements to the 100 Conway Building, which we'll get into in a minute. To save the borough some money, FNA is currently discussing a proposal to refinance our existing debt. The Norberg Fire Company requested that the borough resume a prior practice of matching the funds that they contribute towards their capital program. The Norberg Library asked for an increase in the contribution the borough provides to them. Looking at their funding, it looks like, again, 2019 or 2020, the borough cut funding to the Norberg Library, and they're asking for a restoration of that funding. We have here $20,000 to map and camera our storm sewer lines. We've discovered recently the borough doesn't know where all the storm sewer lines are. We also don't know the specific condition of those lines, and this funding would allow us to evaluate that. Parks and Rec Committee asked for an additional, they asked for a total of $30,000. Historically, the borough has provided around $15,000 to $20,000 per year, hence the net number. The baseline budget provides $15,000, hence a net number of $15,000 for some additional maintenance needs at Norberg Park and Sabine Park. Meeting with the Shade Tree Commission, they are hoping to get $15,000. Historically, I believe the borough, this year, budgeted $12,500. And I will admit, I budgeted, like I mentioned, zero technically in the baseline budget for them, $15,000 to continue their planting program. Something I want to do, we'll talk more when we get to the Highway Aid Fund, is move some of the expenses from that to the general fund. And that's what these, if you are here, we talked about the bank account already. And then I didn't have the details of the chief's proposal before making this. So hence why there's a question mark there, depending on what direction council wants to go with all of that. The rest of these will be much faster, I promise. The sewer fund, as the name implies, that is the fund where we get our money for the sewer system, and we use it to maintain that system. My one request I have there is the consolidation of bank accounts. Again, we get to the capital fund. You know, the borough had budgeted in there to contribute $35,000 towards repairs. I think that might be a little premature until we've actually done the mapping and evaluation program to know what the extent of the problems of that are. And then, like I mentioned at the beginning, I think we might be better off doing a debt issuance, depending on the size of the need, as opposed to trying to do a pay-as-you-go program for it. But you all have more history on the borough's direction with that. Solid waste fund. So again, these are the fees related to the trash collection in the borough. And for this year, it's going to have a pretty big deficit. There were a number of bills from 2020 from Laura Marion Township that we got for disposal. So we had a pretty big surplus in 2020, and now we're now at a deficit in 2021 to offset those disposal fees. And it does have, and actually going back to the sewer fund, the sewer fund, just so you know, does currently have a balance of over $300,000. So if there was some emergency line break or failure, there is money for the borough to handle that. And dealing with solid waste, if there was some major solid waste problem, there is a fund balance of almost $400,000 in that fund.
What would be a solid waste problem that would require that kind of?
You know, I was going to ask Borough Council that because also in the capital plan, it calls for contributing, oh, sorry, right?
No, go ahead.
It calls for contributing $5,000 a year to a sub-two solid waste capital improvement. And I'll be honest with you, I had no clue what that possibly had.
Sorry, I have been in discussions with Jesse Lyle of the EAC about some possibilities for solid waste, a digester or something that would take some of our solid waste and turn it into biofuel or other things. We thought that might be an appropriate use for some of the solid waste.
But sort of outside of maybe things related to sustainability, right? You just look at sort of the classic solid waste model, we don't know what.
I think when I talked to Sean about it, he said something about dumpsters, I mean, we need to replace the dumpsters. But dumpster, I'm not sure he had. I don't think he had a very clear idea. I mean, the reason why I was looking at alternatives is because he didn't have a good idea where that money should go.
I don't either, so I'm very open to suggestions on that.
I mean, it's a dedicated fund, so it has to go toward solid waste.
Yeah, absolutely. Again, only reflects ideas of, I'll go off the ground. All right, so the capital fund, the capital fund, as defined in years past, all items are $2,500 or more cost, useful life greater than one year. It does definitely have its own dedicated funding. It gets funded from grants, donations, debt proceeds, and contributions from the other funds. The projects currently budgeted in there are the Norberg Fab Bridge. And this is how much fund balance each project has. Sewer line replacement, road paving, fire truck, solid waste, stormwater bump outs pending the county transportation grant, and then all other. It doesn't, with this fund, giving you an overall fund balance number isn't very helpful because the projects are specific to themselves. So like I mentioned earlier, if we get debt for a certain thing, that's where the debt has to be spent. If we get grant for a certain thing, that's where the money has to be spent.
But other than restricted grants, we do have more leeway to move these funds.
Yeah, that's what that, you do have, over time, it builds up this $200,000. Yeah, that can be a leeway there. Capital fund, if you approved all these requests, you would need an extra $321,000 to approve all of it. So your options will either be, your most easily accessible options will either be to take out additional debt or to reduce the, you know, not approve a rate expense or scale back some of the requests. And they are. To, like I mentioned, I think earlier, there's $58,000 in debt from the Sabine Roof Loan that I'd like to move to the general fund to refund some of the debt associated with that. I would like to borrow $1 million, hear me out on this. The KCBA study in the borough did, the recommendations for this building do total close to that number. And the biggest emphasis for this, as I mentioned during Public Health earlier, is the air conditioning system went completely shot this summer. It's going to cost the borough over $200,000 just to replace the air conditioning system, which I, again, I'm very biased on this one, but I would strongly advise council to do that. Also, for public meetings, I know people have been very unhappy about that. Also, we weren't able to hold a blood drive this year because of it. So it does impact the community as well.
That system has not gotten through a summer working, probably in ten years.
So I would like council to consider, we don't want $200,000 staying around. We would need to borrow for this project. So if we're going to do a borrowing, I would like to try and knock out as much of the building essential systems and needs as possible. Again, there's a Norberg Fire Company request for the annual match. So the highway aid contributions, well, again, we'll come to that with the Highway Aid Fund. Again, there are contributions as well for storm and sanitary sewer improvements. And I would like to put those on hold again until the mapping project is done. Just for one year, put that on pause, know the extent of the problem is, and then determine the best way to fix and fund it. Transfer the bank accounts and transfer some of the other things to more appropriate funds. Parks and Rec on the Hapfield side asked for the tennis court to be resurfaced and one court converted to two pickleball courts. There were some quotes, I think, previously gotten for that from either Parks and Rec or the NAA. And it was a bill of around $125,000. Parks and Rec also asked for the fieldhouse bathrooms to be renovated. There wasn't a number for that, I'll admit, I just kind of pulled $35,000 out of the air, sort of a safe number for that. Parks and Rec asked for a bathroom to be installed at Sabine Park, as well as additional lighting. Again, I don't have a cost estimate on that one. The Norberg Cycling Club, I actually met with earlier today to talk about bike improvements for next year. In my discussion with them, I would say that the requests there probably be somewhere between $15,000 and $20,000 to do all the requests they had, which includes a bike pilot, again, next year, making possibly permanent the Haverford Bike Pilot, depending on how that goes, mainline greenway implementation, working on a very, very basic active transportation plan for the borough. mainline greenway implementation, working on a very, very basic active transportation plan for the Borough. So we're not just on an ad hoc basis or one-off doing bike improvements. Let's see here, the Public Works Department told me that they would like a Gator in lieu of a new vehicle, which that could be an EV if Council wants to go in that direction. And then there's been a loader that we've been renting to own since March, I want to say. And the request was for the Borough to actually purchase that loader. Also talking with Public Works, a salt storage shed. As many of you may notice in the parking lot right now, it's just hay bales with a tarp over it and the tarp does not last the whole year. And we literally have money going down the drain because you can see the salt working its way into the storm sewer. So it's a financial issue, B is an environmental issue and a storage shed would fix that problem. Yes.
So we're not supposed to store anything like that in the flood plain? Or I mean, there's regulations that you can't store any kind of, anything like that in a shed in the flood plain? So just want to make sure that this is not going to be.
That's a good point, yeah. Yeah, we might have to, depending on that, might have to consider where that shed is located, whether the current spot is the right location for it, based on our point now. They also, I talked with Public Works, per the Planet Action Plan, of converting to electric power tools. The Police Department, I did receive a specific request in time for this presentation in terms of equipment to implement a taser and body worn camera system, replace some of the guns that are due for replacement. As the chief mentioned in his presentation, to replace the desktop computers that are who knows how old and to replace the office furniture that's from the eighties. Also, as the chief mentioned in his presentation, funding to replace the parking vehicle with an electric vehicle with all wheel drive. The Highway Aid Fund, our last, our second to last one here tonight, that's to say, gas tax money, our share of it. It can be used for a whole variety of purposes. That being said, so every year PENDO does a very vigorous audit of that money. And based on past experience, it's much easier to deal with that audit if you've just been using it for road paving. Because then it's like, well, here's where we got the money, here's the one check we wrote to a contractor for road paving, we're done. Whereas if you're spending on other things, you have to pull all the other invoices and all the information together for PENDO. So we can't do it, it's just that's my preference. Also, I mean, just given the limited amount of Highway Aid money that the Borough gets, I just would rather prefer to focus that money as well on road projects. And then the Police Pension Fund, it's what's called a fiduciary fund. So I actually don't include it in the budget because it's kind of its own world and it doesn't really, it has revenues and expenses, but it's, it's not something that you usually have in the budget. I mean, you can go either way, if you really want it in the budget, I can put it in there. It's not usual to do that. It's currently funded at a little over $3.5 million and per our recently approved actuarial report, it's funded at just below 70%. Next steps, I will work on an actual budget document. GFOA has guidelines for budget presentation. I've probably haven't had time this year to follow it to the letter, but we'll follow it as close as we can. I'll have that draft budget ready for a council at the November Budget Work Session to take a look at. And then at your meeting on November 17th, you would need to approve advertising a budget and if necessary, a tax ordinance. If you're not, if you're not raising or lowering taxes, you don't need a tax ordinance, it can just be a resolution. If you're raising taxes, you need to do an ordinance. And then the budget also has to be legally advertised. So at your December 15th meeting, you would actually be able to approve the budget and tax ordinance. And then part of Borough Code, make sure everyone's aware, since the citizens' municipal election year, the budget would be eligible to be reopened in early 2022 if the new council solved it. And there were, it was only 34 solvays. So the two biggest things I wanted were general impressions and then by, as soon as Council could tell me by November 3rd, to tell me what your thoughts are on the proposals, because then I can actually build out the actual numbers on the budget. I don't know how much time or energy there is to do that tonight, but it does need to be done sooner than later, please.
And I think historically, we have taken an opportunity to hear from the Borough Manager and then everyone can sort of give their feedback in. I know there's already feedback that has led to this proposal. And then we have time for further discussion, either at our next meeting or the meeting, the first meeting in November.
Do you want us to direct it to you for the discussion?
No, I would send it directly to the Borough Manager. Discussion, sort of political discussion about policy would come between us at the table ideally, so that people can hear it. But in terms of Samantha plotting and planning what an actual budget document could look like and sort of reading the tea leaves, I think I'd go directly to her. Any other questions on the budget presentation? Hearing none.
For like the good of the group, sorry.
Please do.
Samantha, I just, well, hey, so she knew you couldn't see her smiling under the mask, so I forgot about that. But I just want to highlight when you said, you know, you really are considering debt as an issue of equity. And I just, I appreciate, I had never thought of that, like the people that are paying for their taxes now should really reap the benefits and the fruits of whatever that social infrastructure or community commitment is. And I, I, I think that reflects all of our kind of commitment to community management. And to hear it in terms of a financial strategy was one that I had never heard of or known and, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. I think you will get some feedback. Good feedback. All right, we'll move to 7C. Who is leading that conversation?
I guess I can maybe start on that one. So yes, I'll give Council, I mean, I can give Council as much or as little detail as you want. So the Borough, back in March, I believe, approved hiring E-Consult to do a Phase One study on the 201 Savine Avenue property. Phase One was defined as being an evaluation of the property in its current state and the financial impact of continuing it in its current configuration. So myself and Councilwoman Panopoulos and Councilwoman Wysfor had some conversations with E-Consult. I know they also spoke with Gentis. I think they may have spoke with some of the tenants at 201 Savine. They walked the property and they prepared this report for us that tries to answer those questions. Probably the most important part of the presentation is, like many presentations, the last page, where it goes through what would happen over the next 10 years, drawing on the data they gathered for the future revenue from the property and the future expenses we would have. They also noted some risks that aren't fully financially quantifiable. For example, the risk of no action is that, you know, any, like with the roof a couple of years ago, we run the risk that every day that goes by without a decision on the property, some other critical element of it could fail that the Borough would need to pay money to replace. There's also on the revenue side, the challenge of bringing new tenants in while the building is under a state of uncertainty, as well as the difficulty in recruiting tenants with the Borough's 18-month recapture provision in the lease. So there are risks on both the revenue and expense side from inaction that this study wasn't able to capture due to their nature, but were noted. So what happens is if the Borough were to continue with the property in its current configuration, we would have to do a borrowing, we're talking about, according to the KCBA study, about $4 million in, you know, in improvements the building would need. And we definitely, as you all just heard, do not have $4 million sitting around. So when you factor in the cost of that borrowing and what market interest rates would be, especially on this property, which would not be eligible for tax-free financing, you're looking at an interest rate somewhere between 3.5% and 6%, I think is what they mapped out, or maybe 3.5% to 5.5%. And when you look at those costs compared to the building, you know, if we run the building, their report would seem to me to say that if we run the building as we are now, you can make a profit off of it because the, you know, I mean, the Borough isn't doing these capital improvements to it, which are going to have to happen if it stays in its current configuration. The challenge becomes though, if you do these capital improvements, paying off that debt, you don't get a magical corresponding increase in revenue just because you did these capital improvements. And while you would get some additional revenue over time, it's nowhere near what the debt payment would be on that, on that. So as noted in the presentation, if the Borough wanted to continue with the building in the current configuration, it would have to seek other sources of funding to continue that. So that's where the Phase One was left at, if we continue as is, we would have to do substantial capital improvement. That capital improvement would be more than the enhanced revenue that we would get. And not doing that capital improvement is not an option if we want to continue the building in the current configuration.
Do you have anything to add? Do you have anything you wanted to add?
I think it might be useful to back, just back up a little bit and talk about why, what the impetus for this was. And I was actually going to ask you if you would address that because you led the meeting that sort of brought out the public.
So we had a community meeting to discuss 201 Savine, where I think mentally we were a little further along, us at the council table, of sort of where this, we're doing a Phase One study might lead us. That's not to say that the results of this study were predetermined, they were not. This was, you know, an independently performed study. But just our knowledge of finances and looking at the KCBA report and trying to understand what might happen with this property, I think we had a pretty clear picture that there was going to be a lot of red at the bottom in those future years and that's what we saw. But when we went to the community, we, I think we did one thing successfully, which was to say, if this could be something else, what would you like to see? And I think we got some very clear feedback, it's about maintaining open space, increasing open space, protecting open space, and increased opportunity for either community amenities or the kinds of businesses, profit or nonprofit, that benefited the community. So that was great. What we, what we did not sort of communicate well and I think left members of the public questioning our motives, questioning our next steps, two pieces. One was what is the plan? We didn't come to them with a plan or a presentation of like, okay, we heard you and now here we go. We were really just gathering information. And I think people were eager to tell us their opinions, but then also they wanted to see what we had in mind. The reason we didn't move to that next step was because I think there was also a large community sentiment. Show me the numbers that prove this doesn't work. And I think that's very legitimate because we're talking about a lot of money and we're talking about a major community resource. And so Council took that message to say, okay, even though we are very, very sure that these numbers are going to show that this property is not sort of financially sustainable in its current form, we'll go back, we'll hire a consultant, we'll do those numbers inexpensively, by the way. You consulted this at a very reasonable price. And now we have these numbers. And so now we've sort of gone back from, we started at step two, we went back, we completed step one and hopefully that allows this community to move to step three. How'd I do? That's where we are. So thank you for that and, you know, I encourage members of the community to take a look at this report that will be available on the Borough website. Come to us with your questions, we want to hear them. It's, it's the Borough's biggest asset and I think we all have strong desire to be stewards of this community and help guide that asset towards the most benefit to the Borough and its residents. Question, Fred?
Well, I just want to suggest that these numbers, they only go out for 10 years, but in reality, the Borough to, you know, this assumes the Borough would take out a 20-year loan. So over the course of the 20-year loan, it looks to me like the Borough ends up more than $2 million in debt by their numbers. But it would be nice to get it projected out for the length of the loan, just so we could say, doing this would cost the Borough $2 million in loan, which I think is what these numbers say.
And that also means a loss of what is now currently 5% of the Borough's revenue in addition to the accumulation of debt. So it's a bit of a double whammy from the financial side. Council records.
So these are really compelling numbers. And I suspect this may come in the next phase, but, so the numbers were saying, if there's market projection, we invest $4 million to keep status quo, keep this, the same kind of leasing scenario, rental scenario as we are right now, which generates 5%. I understand that. However, the pandemic hit and the retail lease rental need for office space has radically shifted. And everything I'm reading, it's not expected to return in a way pre-pandemic. So my question is, in phase two, will there be any market projections to say, however, you may not see a 5% rental lease as market shifts change and people, there's not a need for office space?
That would be phase, phase three, just for the, the Borough.
So not even phase two, this would be phase?
Well, we started with two, we complete, we went back.
Okay, I'm sorry, phase, I was thinking E-Consult.
Phase three, right, would be to come forward with some kind of plan.
I think we could ask for that and they're clear that E-Consult is competent to do that kind of analysis, but every time we ask them to do an analysis, it costs them money. So I also feel like if you can look at the rosiest scenario, which this probably is, it's based on a 4% interest rate, whereas the range was 3.8% to 6.5%. If you can look at the rosiest scenario and see us in the red for, you know, 20 years, I think that it may not be necessary to do a lot of analysis.
Heaven be in the red.
Yeah, I mean, we may not need to pay for market analysis, but if we're still on the edge.
If you say your interest rate is zero, it'd still be.
I don't, I don't think we should pay to do that. Part of me just wanted to process that for the public as well. So let's not spend more money on what you point out, the rosiest scenario.
But again, and I say this for the public, the clearest message that we all at the table heard was the need for open space, the need to preserve and expand those open space opportunities. So I think we know we need to do something and that something must involve open space.
Oh, sorry, I don't want to take away discussion, Council. So as, I think you all come to learn about me now, I'm a big person like, what's the next step to make sure things don't linger, dawdle? So would Council be comfortable with having E-Consult move on to the Phase Two portion of this or does Council need some time to digest Phase One first?
I think we should at least give two weeks to see what public response we might get from this project. But maybe it would make sense to have on our agenda for that meeting, the opportunity to move forward.
And can you kind of explain for everyone what that Phase Two would entail?
Sure. So when Borough Council did the scope of work or letter of engagement with E-Consult, Phase Two, I don't have it right in front of me, but my recollection is that Phase Two was defined as evaluating the, how the alternate scenarios for the property would be and how they would compare to the base case that we've talked about tonight in Phase One.
Okay.
So a menu of options, right?
Just not to be confused with the Bankett Study that you were.
That's right, I have my own.
This is Phase Two of what E-Consult would do.
They're, they're Phase Two.
An analysis, an analysis of options.
And we should remind everybody, E-Consult is just pure consultancy, is not a developer of any kind.
They're not a developer of any kind, they do not do that. They crunch numbers and they write reports.
Yeah, and I would imagine too, the Phase Two study, this was pure, you know, income and expenses. The Phase Two study, I'm sure would have a public input, a public desire component to it. It wouldn't just be, these are the three things that make the most money out of the property. It'll be, I think, as Council President Muderick mentioned, would include an understanding of the public desire for open space and other amenities on the property.
And luckily, we have that meeting recorded, so they could listen to it and say like. That's right. Okay. Any other questions on 201 Savine? Information items, agenda item eight? Hearing none?
Actually, no, I said that, I have one information item, sorry.
It's hard for me to see that you guys are ready to speak because I can't see your faces, I apologize.
The Borough offices will be closed on Monday, October 11th. We might want to talk about making some changes to the Borough holidays the next time we update the personnel manual, but for now, October 11th is the day the Borough offices is closed.
Okay. Is that Indigenous Peoples' Day?
It is.
Okay. Infrastructure. Councilor Bush?
Sure. So we primarily discussed two items. One was the possibility of piloting a skate park. So we've been discussing this for a while. We looked at possible areas to do this. The two areas that we've discussed were Sabine and the tennis courts. The Parks and Recreation Committee looked this over. They strongly recommended doing this at Sabine. However, when we tried to sort of make things fit at Sabine, there's not, there's not a good place at the moment because the cooperative gardens are using a lot of the space in the back parking lot. They've got their planners kind of spread throughout that area. They are using the space through December. They're going to be, it's going to be the final cleanup date. We've already provided them with the use of that property. And then the, the front of the lot is, is in use for the tenants at two oh one Sabine. So it's not really accessible during the week. So our recommendation as a committee is to move forward with a trial on the tennis courts to take the, to get a sort of a, get a layout of some of the equipment there, plan it out and install it on the tennis courts for a trial period, after which we'd evaluate if we want to get permanent or not. If anybody wants to add anything else on that.
I would add, there's other reasons why we made the recommendation that we did. Our insurance company, our insurer, has said that it needs to be fenced.
Access control.
And the tennis court is already fenced, so we would not have to install a fence.
That's true.
It is a more central location, easier to monitor usage. I think that will also be better for our insurance and liability. And I believe that Fifth Pocket, the sort of skate park consultants, I don't know. Skate, skate park people who design skate parks and are sort of giving us, I think, some free advice, which has been kind of them, sort of took, took a glance at the facilities and said, you know, we don't really, we don't see that there at Sabine. We don't really see how that would work. And then, you know, just harkening back to the letter that we opened this, this meeting with, you know, this tennis, you know, avid tennis players, you know, concerned about the condition of our courts has deemed them sort of almost unplayable. So unless we were to decide when we get to the capital budget that we're going to invest in res servicing the courts next year, it seems like it's sort of an ideal time to sort of like put something there that's not really that concerned about the condition. And after a year, we may have better information and decide, you know, what's the best use of that space. So it seemed like to make a lot of sense from many different angles to choose that location.
It also provides for observation. It's better, it's easier to keep an eye on it if it's in the middle of, of, or even near the police station, say. So.
Fred, can I make a request that we can facilitate through FNA?
Yeah, we should, I mean, we should discuss this again. We should let Parks and Recreation have a chance to respond. But they are interested in the issue, so we should, we should bring them to that discussion if we can.
Sure. Well, then I'll just hang on your radar for all the good reasons that you say. For the tennis court, I was also like to add just an economic developmental of, you know, having folks that are traveling from outside the neighborhood coming in for the skate park that perhaps we can talk to the NBA and think, how can we really strategically say, hey, when you're here, go buy a hokey, put the gum you're doing, go get a gift? And kind of leverage that tool.
Okay. Anything else under infrastructure?
The other we talked about is outdoor dining, setting up regulations to regularize outdoor dining. Right now, our current ordinance has expired. So we're still working on, sort of nailing down the details. But we should have something fairly soon, I think, too.
Yeah, I had a conversation earlier today at the borough's legislature about preparing that ordinance. So I think that's on, do you have that to take a look at?
I think, I think we, we did a survey and a strong community desire to continue the, the outdoor dining. So we've been working for that.
But we need to, we need to get it reauthorized and, and re-shrine those rules before there's some conflict.
Yeah, particularly with snow plowing, trying to figure out how we can make it work with snow plowing. So I think we're leaning towards now and seeing if the businesses can, if they wish to maintain their outdoor dining during the winter, if they take care of their own, cleaning up their own area.
The snow removal of the areas they occupy.
Yeah, that was a proposal. That's it for infrastructure.
Finance?
We just saw the budget, but if I can connect another issue with infrastructure, which I think is important with the budget, is that if we're going to respond to the community that overwhelmingly said, yes, we love outdoor dining, there may in fact be some budget implications on moving from, you know, the temporary water barricades to the need for some raised pedestrian walkways or traffic calming. And I wonder if we should really think about that in our budget as we move forward.
Do me a favor and just put that in writing as like a request in, just through this process.
Got it.
But absolutely, that makes sense.
Finance administration, you just saw the budget. So I don't know anything to add other than a friendly reminder that four of us have completed comprehensive evaluations to the other three. Please fill that out. That would be appreciated.
Public health and safety?
Yeah, so we met before this meeting and the traffic review process is now underway. So Sabine Avenue is the first street that's being monitored with our traffic counting equipment. And we can track the direction the cars are moving as well. So we'll have some data that will come to the committee. Thanks to Samantha and John for the, setting up the process. So we also have upcoming a discussion of inspections for commercial properties. We can discuss this next month in the committee. Residential rental properties, sidewalk inspections. The snow emergency routes came to our attention from our neighbors on Williams Avenue, Williams Avenue on the north side. So the, the snow route signs don't match the ordinance, so that's a project. We want to get those to match. And for the residents who made the initial complaint, we're planning to improve the plow on their street because it's especially narrow. And that may involve actually removing some of the snow.
For your loader, right?
Yeah, the loader. Okay, then we also reviewed the, the Climate Action Plan, section ten, that relates to borough operations. And we have made significant progress already with the EV stations, the LED streetlights. And we're planning, we're hoping that in the budget, we could, we could have the money for the switch to electric lawn equipment, this kind of thing. So the number of the recommendations in the cap for the borough operation, you really can see that we're making good progress.
I understand, because I don't think you're aware, the fire company switched to electric tools.
Oh, I didn't know that. Good.
So we don't, we don't, you know, run them very much, you know, sort of episodic. But, but they are, they are now electric. And I believe all of the larger fire company now has upgraded to electric.
Great. Okay. And of course, the borough, in the borough buildings, the electric supply has been switched to renewable. And we're confirming that the gas is also landfill methane. So, yeah, so we're making progress, but there is this big opportunity with the HVAC system that we discussed briefly with the manager, that if we're going to replace the AC, we may want to consider a heat pump solution on the heat side as well. One other thing that I think would be coming to our committee is a recommendation from the EAC, I've been speaking with Jesse, and they would like to put a price on carbon as part of the cap for the sake of borough purchases. You know, so that there could be a price assigned, a carbon price assigned to say a combustion engine vehicle versus an electric vehicle.
That would be for us to consider.
For us to consider, exactly, in, in making decisions. And so that's something that would come to the committee soon.
Okay. When you're looking at the HVAC system, I would also look at the choice of refrigerant of the, of the system that you're choosing, because it will one day leak and that will have an impact on the climate. Okay, announcements? All right, we will, do we have any decisions to make following our executive session?
Actually, no. So I think you can adjourn.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I agree, adjourn.
A three, five minute break, and then we will reconvene. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, have a lovely evening, everybody.